Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here. First item of business is a closed session. I'll ask the city attorney to let us know what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to go into closed session for conference with legal counselor, that legal counsel on anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2, which is significant exposure to litigation and there is one potential case.
Very good. There's no one in the room to offer public comment on the closed session item. Do we have anybody online?
No, sir.
In that case, we'll bring it back to the counsel and without objection, we will recess to closed session.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Pastoral City Council for Tuesday, April the 19th. Mayor Steve Martin speaking. Before we get started, I'd like to read this, please. The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for a deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio at 12:30 a.m. or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link, www.prcity.com/youtube. With that, we will ask you, as you are able to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Strong.
With me, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are pleased to have with us again this evening Pastor Sheehan to give us our invocation. Welcome back.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful season where we celebrate the resurrection of your glorious Son. We ask your blessing upon our city, upon our mayor and council members. Give them the wisdom and the knowledge they need to run this beautiful city. Watch over, bless, and protect and keep our police department and emergency services as they protect and serve. Lord, thank you for this beautiful season. Thank you for this great time to be alive. Thank you for all that you do for us and continue to do for us. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
President.
Mayor Martin?
And I am president. At this time, we'd like to invite our staff to introduce themselves, those present and online. If you belong to a city advisory committee, we'd also ask you to rise and identify yourself so we can see who does the work of the city. Starting on my right, please.
Warren Fraysk, Community Development Director.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Dave McHugh, IT Manager, and Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator.
Deidre Speranza, Capital Projects.
Brian Cornell, Administrative Services Director.
Frida Romo.
Chris Yowes.
Ty Lewis, City Manager.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online?
Darren Nash, City Planner.
Thank you very much. Prior to the open council meeting this evening, we had an announced closed session meeting. I'll ask the city attorney if there was any reportable action from that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session on one item. It was conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation. There was significant exposure to litigation in one case, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We move on to our regular agenda tonight. First off, we have presentations, and number one, we have a presentation for World War II Commemoration Week. I would like to invite Dr. Kathleen Cairns to come forward. Happy to have us with you tonight. Just as a little bit of introduction, I have notes on you. I'm not going to read all of them, but I'm going to read some of them. Kathleen A. Cairns holds a BA and an MA in History from California State University Long Beach and a PhD in History from the University of California, Davis. She spent 12 years as a journalist for the Long Beach Press-Telegram. From the mid-1990s to 2019, she taught history and women's studies at California State University at Sacramento and at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. She's the author of six books focused on women's experiences in 20th century California. So we welcome you tonight. Tonight, we have what is probably the media's proclamation I've ever read. So settle in. Okay. It was written by my good friend John Ashbaugh, and he likes to be very complete, so. World War II Commemoration Week. Whereas in the months after the attack on Pearl Harbor, the advent of World War II dramatically and irrevocably transformed the county of San Luis Obispo and all its population as the entire nation mobilized for war. Camp San Luis Obispo was occupied by the Army in 1940, and during the war, this post served as a training base for seven combat divisions deployed both to Europe and the Pacific Theater, as well as 5,000 Marines. At its peak, the combined ranks of the military mobilizing for war in San Luis Obispo County amounted to 22,000 soldiers. Whereas in Morro Bay and Baywood Park, amphibious training bases were utilized by the Navy, Marines, Army, and Coast Guard to prepare troops for the island hopping strategy employed in the Pacific Theater of the war. Camp Roberts in northern San Luis Obispo County began its mission in March 1941. Throughout World War II, Camp Roberts was the largest U.S. Army basic training installation in the nation. Over 436,000 troops were trained here, over 5% of the nation's entire army during the war. By 1944, this base reached its peak population of 45,000 troops, with thousands of these soldiers quartered in huge tent cities with a 750-bed hospital, churches, warehouses, PXs, and other support facilities, many of which continue to be in use today. Whereas the last week of April 1942 held special significance in the history of each of the communities throughout the central coast because on April 30th, the nation began the enforcement of Executive Order 9066 throughout the county and in the cities of Arroyo Grande and San Luis Obispo. In the Arroyo Grande Valley alone, 211 Japanese Americans were expelled from their homes and confined in internment camps for the duration of the conflict, including 25 of the 58 members of Arroyo Grande High School's class of 1942, all of them citizens of the United States. Whereas in April 1942, the first units of the 54th Coast Artillery Regiment began arriving in San Luis Obispo, deployed in two battalions each with two batteries of 155-millimeter howitzers pointed out to sea and assigned to protect their critical oil terminals in the communities Avala Beach, Shell Beach, and Morro Bay. These highly-trained black GIs took up their positions in barracks within a five-minute response time of their batteries, thereby tripling the county's black population in the 1940 census. Whereas Filipino-Americans were also called to enlist throughout the central coast and first reported to Camp San Luis Obispo. These men responded in numbers far exceeding the recruitment goals of the U.S. Army and ultimately formed two full regiments of volunteers who fought bravely throughout the Pacific, especially in the savage battles that liberated Manila in 1945, and played a key role in the transition of the Philippines to full independence during the occupation that followed. Whereas it's appropriate that residents of the central coast set aside a week in April 2022 to reflect upon that time, only 80 years ago, where our community and our nation came together as one people to fight the common enemy of fascism and imperialism, a time when we entered a war that ended not only with military victory, but with the establishment of institutions that fostered a peaceful world order committed to human rights, democracy, and respect for national sovereignty and the common aspirations of humanity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the last week of April as World War II Commemoration Week, joining with the South County Historical Society and the History Center of San Luis Obispo County, the South County Historical Society of Morro Bay, Morro Bay Maritime Museum, and Central Coast Veterans Memorial Museum, in marking this week with three public events throughout the county to educate our citizens about the brave men and women who endured enormous sacrifices of their property, their liberty, and in many cases, their lives to achieve victory in World War II and kindle the hopes for a lasting peace. Thank you for being with us tonight and to receive this, and we would offer you the opportunity to make a few comments if you would like.
And that is that if you go on the San Luis Obispo History website, you can see some of the events that are occurring over the next few, the next couple of weeks. And there's going to be on the 30th of April at the Daladee Adobe in San Luis Obispo, there's going to be a lunch, which will honor some of the people in San Luis Obispo who have participated and longtime participants in a lot of activities here. And since the proclamation doesn't mention Passer Robles, I thought I would just offer a couple of, a couple of things. And one is that, that some of, most of the soldiers being trained at Camp Roberts actually lived in tents, as this proclamation says, but, but a number of them lived in Passer Robles as well. You probably know that the Oak Park development came as a result of that. It was created in 1941. I think it was 150 or 160 units that soldiers lived in. But more than that, they also lived in the community. And I just have one anecdote to tell you about, and that is in my neighborhood, there's a house that has two stories. It used to be one story before World War II. The owners added a story on the house, on top of the house, and they also added a deck on the back, and they added a separate stairway for, for soldiers who were living there for tenants to enter and exit separately. So about 10 or 12 years ago, my neighbor was outside working in the yard, and here comes a car driven up, and there's an elderly gentleman and his wife in the car. They got out and they, and they said, they talked to the owner and said that they had lived in the house in World War II. And so the owner of the house invited them to come in and to tour the house, and, and they were absolutely thrilled. They just said it was, you know, it was a terrible experience, you know, being, having to go to war, but, but living in the house was really, was wonderful. And so I often thought it would be a really interesting project to find houses where, where people lived, where soldiers lived in World War II and do a story or something on it. So, so thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
And next, we have a proclamation for April 2022 as Sexual Assault Action Month. And do we have Erica Neal? Erica, come on up. So we're very pleased to make this proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual and intimate partner violence is widespread and impacts every person in Passer Robles. Whereas Rise and Stand Strong officially merged on July 1st, 2021, to form Lumina Alliance, an agency that serves survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence throughout all of San Luis Obispo County. And whereas although progress has been made toward preventing and ending sexual violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. Whereas there is a need to focus on the individualized needs of sexual violence survivors. And whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases their vulnerability to sexual violence. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by sexual violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. Whereas Lumina Alliance has provided services to more than 1,874 people in the last year, including more than 8,027 collective nights provided for sheltered clients and provided more than 6,461 therapy sessions. Whereas Lumina Alliance encourages the community to recognize our collective power to create a culture that simultaneously supports survivors and nurtures a world where everyone can live free from violence. Whereas the city of Passer Robles strongly supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance, how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence and how to help survivors connect with services. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, Mayor of the city of Passer Robles, speaking on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens of Passer Robles, in recognition of the important work done by sexual violence programs, we do hereby proclaim the month of April to be National Sexual Assault Action Month, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and the city council for this proclamation. My name is Erica Neal, and I'm the Director of Donor Relations at Lumina Alliance. Lumina Alliance, as Mr. Mayor Martin said, is a nonprofit organization created by the merger of Rise and Stand Strong in July 2021. Our mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, and prevention programs. During the month of April, we look to engage in conversation with our community to educate and dispel myths around sexual assault and to foster a culture that supports survivors. Like many of you, we are saddened to hear about the multiple sexual assaults that have been shared by dozens of survivors on local media recently. This only illustrates what we know to be true, that sexual assault is underreported and that it can take months, years, or even decades to disclose. April is dedicated to creating a community that not only condemns sexual violence of all kinds, but actively works to fight against it. Throughout the month, there are many opportunities for community members across the county to learn more about sexual violence and actions that they can take to prevent it. Lumina Alliance and our sister agency, Cal Poly Safer, have planned a series of events, including a denim day on April 27th, where we encourage our community to wear denim and to share photos on social media with a message of support to survivors. We also would be participating in Take Back the Night, a candlelight vigil on the Cal Poly campus on April 28th. We invite you to join us for these events and take action during this important month. Please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, call 805-545-8888 to speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, we are so grateful for this proclamation and the ongoing support of the Passer Robles City Council. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, our staff and volunteers, we thank all of you for taking action this month to create our vision of a safe, thriving, and equitable community.[1784.97][1784.97][applause]
Next up on tonight's agenda, we have our Capitol Projects Report. Ditas Esperanza and Frida Berman.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent, this is a joint report on capital improvement projects by Community Services and Public Works. Starting with Community Services, and I'll start with the complete projects. We just finished last Friday the resurfacing with a commercial-grade epoxy coating of the indoor, the municipal pool locker room floors. As you know, this is one of the oldest facilities in the city that we maintain. Next week, we are starting on the outdoor pool coping replacement project. Both these projects were on your last approved list and we are happy to be moving forward with them. In-progress projects, Fire Station 3 start is imminent. Our notice to proceed in mobilization is May 2nd, 2022, which is just in a couple weeks. The entire team, Newton Construction as contractors and Wallace Group as our construction managers are working really hard on all the long lead items and the actual start date was delayed to accommodate long lead items and supply chain issues. So we're very excited to get started on that. The duration is a year, a year-long project. The Uptown Family Park water feature replacement has been returned from plan check and we just received, before I got to this meeting, the revised plans from the architect, which will go back to the Building Department. So hopefully we'll be able out to bid in, in this month or the beginning of next month and get this water feature in Uptown Family Park before the hot weather is over. The Centennial Park Shade Sale is also in plan check. We don't expect any issues. Actually, the shade sale is sitting in the maintenance yard right now, so it should be pretty quick once we get plan check approval back. Barney Schwartz Park Pump Track, I know you're familiar with this project, funded by Rec Foundation, half-million-dollar project. It is also in plan check and we expect comments back next week. In design are the Pickleball Court Complex Construction. As you're aware, we ran into some floodplain and floodway issues on this project. We, the architect is presenting, going to be presenting three new revised concepts on May 3rd at Public Workshop Number Two that take advantage of the area across the street from the original site, as well as perhaps splitting the courts between the two sites so that the public can provide input, advisory groups can provide input, and then it will be brought to you for a final recommendation and decision. And finally, the law enforcement facilities at 4305 Second Wind Way, there's been a series of very productive design meetings and layouts have been discussed and agreed upon, and now the architect is doing structural and other engineering evaluations of the buildings to make sure that we can provide a state-of-the-art police substation. That is the end of my report and I'd be happy to take any questions before I turn it over to Ditas.
This is an information item, no action is required, but are there council questions or comments? Apparently not.
I have that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maria.
Ms. Frida, I just have a question. I've been seeing some social media about some openings. Is there some openings in the, in your department?
Thank you so much for bringing that up. We do have an opening for a parks maintenance worker, a maintenance worker one slash two. I believe the deadline is May, May 16th, but it is, all the information is online. So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, sir.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there anyone in the room that would like to ask a question or make a comment about the report? Seeing no one rise and I see no one online on the telephone, very good. Thank you very much for that information. Ditas, you're up.
Okay, so this is Public Works Projects under construction. The first one is the edge lights along the taxiway at our municipal airport. These are the drawings that gives you an overview of the edge lightings along the taxiway. And these are the actual people that are installing those edge lights. Just a reminder, this is an FAA grant for $1.2 million. There is a little bit that we're contributing, not that much. The other project that's in construction but pretty much complete is what we're referring to as our West Side Streets pavement rehabilitation. The red lines are the locations of those streets. And as I said, they're pretty much completed, we're just doing final cleanup, raising the utilities and things like that. And here are some action shots of the work. And then we also have our other annual maintenance projects, what we're calling as Thin Maintenance Overlay. And then these are the street names and locations, and those are just about done as well. So those are the projects that's currently under construction or almost completed. These, is there's one project that's coming up for construction, that's our Roundabout at Golden Hill and Union Road. So if you recall, you awarded the project to Granite Construction at a very reduced cost compared to the engineer's estimate, so we were, we took advantage of the construction climate. The contractor is poised to mobilize July 22, 2022. Unfortunately, the first order of business is for the pipes to be installed underground. There is a long lead time for those 16-inch and 12-inch ductile iron pipes. We don't expect them to be delivered until August. So the bad news is we can't close the road and begin construction until August of this year. The good news is that means the road will be open during the Fourth of July celebration. And that concludes, yes, that concludes my presentation. If you have any other questions.
Thank you, council questions? Maria.
Ms. Ditas, if you could just remind the audience and people listening in where the street locations are. I constantly get asked, when is my street going to be next? And I tell them that it's on the website, but if you could just inform the public again.
Yes, so the, what we refer, we refer to as the six-year adopted city council plan is on the website, but if they're having problems looking for it, just call me, 805-237-3861, and I can email it to them, provide them a hard copy, and give them all the locations of where the upcoming streets are going to be in line for scheduling.
Perfect, thank you so much.
So Ditas, I'm not sure if there's a question for you or maybe for Warren, but I know that Creston Road has been blocked with construction going on with that apartment complex. Any idea on when that's going to open up again? It's.
I think I'll refer to David Athie, who's the city engineer, who's watching that project on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, David Athie, city engineer. So we went out there today and the good news is they're ahead of schedule. We believe that the road will be open on schedule this week, I believe Thursday afternoon.
Good, thank you. It's a running down melody and people not used to having that much traffic in the neighborhood, so.
It is a significant event, closing Creston Road, and we don't take that lightly and, and, you know, we tried to get the word out to the community that surrounds the area and also put it on all social media channels so we can get to everybody.
Great, thank you.
Little pain for a little gain.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment or ask a question about this portion of the report? Seeing no one rise, I have no one online. We thank you very much for that information and we move forward now with our agenda. Item number four is our Water Resources and Drought Update Presentation. Mr. Alakal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Tonight I'll be providing a brief update on the city's current water supply and demand projections, as well as the governor's recent drought-related state of emergency proclamation and what that likely means for the residents of Paso Robles. This is a plot showing monthly projected potable water demands in millions of gallons over the past several years. The city is forecasting a slight uptick in demand compared to the last few years, but still significantly below historical peak season demands of around 10 to 12 million gallons per day. The blue dash line is the current year's forecast and it peaks at about 7.6 million gallons per day. This demand projection assumes no mandatory conservation measures are in place. Water supply and demand, there are sufficient water supplies available to provide for all city's current needs. Lake Nacimeno is at 27%. For perspective, 27% is approximately 103 acre feet of storage in that reservoir. This is equivalent to about two Lake Lopez, the volumes of two Lake Lopez's or four Salinas reservoirs. So it's still, although it sounds like the lake is way down, there's still significant volume in that reservoir to provide for our needs. The city's surface water and groundwater supplies are online. Staff has been working diligently to ensure production facilities are in good, good working order as we move into summer. Current potable water production capacity is about 13 to 14 million gallons per day. And when you compare that to our demand projection of about 7.6, you can see that we maintain a robust reserve. And no water shortages are projected for city customers this summer. Our city council has exhibited great foresight and commitment to ensure adequate water resources for our community, for our current residents and for the, for the future of Paso Robles. Unfortunately, that can't be said for all communities throughout the state. This leads us to the governor's order. In late 2021, the governor ordered the State Water Resources Control Board to consider adopting emergency regulations by May 25th, 2022. That will likely require the city to implement a Level 2 of our water shortage contingency plan. This drought response level is designed to reduce water use by up to 20%. The order also seeks to ban irrigation of non-residential ornamental turf and comes with strict and detailed reporting requirements. So what are our plans for this summer? If the order from the board comes down as expected, the city will be implementing Level 2 water shortage requirements this summer. With that, we will continue the city's mandatory minimum requirements, which are in effect at all time. Those, those include no excess runoff from, from parcels. If you wash your vehicle, you must do that with a self-closing nozzle. No single-pass cooling systems, non-recirculating fountains, no non-recirculating car washes, et cetera. Other Level 2 conservation requirements include the implementation of three-day-per-week watering, that's kind of the key or the cornerstone to that Level 2 conservation. So that'll be three days a week. The irrigation will be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to minimize evaporation. It prohibits landscape watering 48 hours after rain events. And then residents have an obligation to repair leaks within five days of being notified. So the, the management actions we're likely to employ in order to satisfy the anticipated state mandated restrictions, we'll be looking to hire a water utility or conservation manager. This is a position that's vacant and we'll probably begin recruiting for that here in the very near future. We will be considering part-time water conservation staff. In order to do rebates, we'll be looking at bringing back our rebate program, our landscape retrofit program. So we need folks to go out there and do the pre and post-construction work or, or conversion work, as well as enforcement. We'll continue with and enhance our radio outreach and communication to the public through website, social media, and so forth. And then, yeah, that's about it, if you have any other questions.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear here, and this has been confusing for our citizens in the past. We as a city have plenty of water, there's no water shortage.
We have ample supply.
And the state is going to put mandatory restrictions all over the state in spite of the fact that we have ample water supplies and we will have to comply, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
There is no alternative, there's no appeal, there's no, we can't fill out a form?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, that is, our portfolio is good enough for a build-out as well, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we have plenty of water. We did well.
We've invested heavily to make sure we didn't run into supply problems.
Exactly, yeah. Although higher authority has a hammer on us, so to speak. My question though was the rebates, Christopher. We had a program where people could change out their landscaping and also toilets and things like that. Is that still active or are we going to revamp it or what's exactly the status of the?
We suspended that a couple of years ago due to staffing shortages, and so we're going to be looking at bringing that back. We had a few different incentive programs for conservation. One was the Cash for Grass, so to speak, and the other one was for toilet retrofits, but the state has their own program for the toilets and that's, that's mostly done in large part, we just don't see a lot of those coming through anymore. But we are looking to kind of restart the landscape retrofit program.
Got it, yeah, thank you.
Any other kinds of questions, Mr. Gregory?
So Christopher, the, the conservation requirements are water three days a week, water in the early morning.
So the actual order hasn't come down yet, and I'm doing this just to provide you or give you a heads up. Based on the order from the governor, this is what it looks like the water board is going to do.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty certain that this is, this is what's going to happen. And so that final order is expected by May 24th.
Are we about 11 and a quarter inches for the year of total rainfall somewhere?
Yep, just under 12.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Other question?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room would like to ask a question, make a comment of this report? I see no one rising. I see no one online to make a comment. Thank you very much for the information. It's unfortunate and confusing for our citizens who have worked so diligently to conserve water and to create water supplies that are totally adequate, that we are folded in with communities that have not been so effective in doing that. So that is a state-level issue and something that I'll be making phone calls about, although probably to no effect. I hate to be pessimistic, some people call it realistic, I don't know. We come now to general public comments. This is a time set aside when the public can address the council on items when the council's purview but not scheduled on the agenda tonight. If you are here for an agenda item, there'll be a separate public comment time when that agenda item is heard. Please begin by stating your name and address. We do have speaker forms at the back of the room, which you can fill out and hand to staff when you come forward. Each person is limited to three minutes and any person or subject requiring more than three minutes may be scheduled for a future council meeting or referred to committee or staff. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity, as I said, when that agenda item comes up. So this is the opportunity for general public comment. If anybody would like to make general public comment, this is your opportunity. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mike Cusson. Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff, I'm Mike Cusson, I'm the local coordinator for AARP Tax Aid here in Paso Robles, as well as the district coordinator for San Luis Obispo County. I'm here tonight to thank the city for letting our tax return preparation group have another successful year. We've had a very challenging time preparing taxes for your constituents, as well as the taxpayers throughout the county. I'd like to specifically thank Linda Plesha, your Recreation Services Manager, for making last year work at the senior center parking lot with her burgundy-colored or her brightly-colored cones that we could use so we could beat taxpayers at their car door windows and get the tax preparation done somewhat orderly. My apologies to the former police chief for having traffic backed up all the way to Creston Road on the first day. There's quite a demand for tax preparation on that first day back February over a year ago. And this year again, Linda helped us by letting us work at Centennial Gymnasium. When we found out at the 11th hour that AARP's COVID restrictions would not let us meet in this room or at the senior center in person, we had to have a bigger parking area and Linda took it upon herself to get the gymnasium opened up over there at Centennial, which is really a lifesaver for us. I also want to extend my thanks to Mickey Wright of the Senior Volunteer Services at the senior center, as well as Sharon McLean over there, and to American Legion Post 50, John Irwin and. And this year again, Linda helped us by letting us work at Centennial Gymnasium. When we found out at the 11th hour that AARP's COVID restrictions would not let us meet in this room or at the senior center in person, we had to have a bigger parking area, and Linda took it upon herself to get the gymnasium opened up over there at Centennial, which is really a lifesaver for us. I also want to extend my thanks to Mickey Wright of the Senior Volunteer Services at the senior center, as well as Sharon McLean over there, and to American Legion Post 50, John Irwin, and Skip Bellinghausen for letting us use the Vet Center as we have for many, many years over there. Now for some statistics. For both Paso and Atascadero, our two North County sites, I know KPRL has a lot of listeners in Atascadero, so I want to take an opportunity to thank those residents for their support of our program. We had a crew of about 15 preparers who prepared 1,120 tax returns, 820 here in Paso Robles, and 300 in Atascadero. In Paso Robles, this is the money item. In Paso Robles, we brought back $846,000 worth of refunds and another $204,000 of refunds in Atascadero. That's over $1 million of refunds that were done by the Tax Aid Program here in the North County. Similar things go on in the South County at our other five sites, so it's really an important effort by our tax preparers to bring refunds back to people. We also got earned income credits for $184,000 for low-income taxpayers. We're not back to where we were before the pandemic, but we are recovering. We often wonder why we do all this work when the IRS always already knows everything. That's why we in the trenches would like to see return-free filing come about, and that could come about fairly soon, we hope. We're always looking for new people and who would like to get involved in preparing taxes with us. You can contact us at ccfreetax.org or call the senior center or the library, Karen Christiansen, the library maintains that program. Again, I want to thank the city for supporting us again. It's been over 25 years that we've been doing taxes in this town, and it's been very successful. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a general public comment? Yes, sir. If you come to lectern, please. Welcome.
Yeah, my name's Mike Stenstrom. I'm kind of new to the area. I moved up here before COVID. Anyway, Steve Martin sent me an email regarding North River Road and the bike path on there, and I was just trying to promote that we need a bike path there. And I was wondering what progress is being made or what the time schedule is for working on that and maybe getting Slocog funds and things like that.
Thank you, sir. We'll try to get you an answer. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll close general public comment, and could we get kind of a fill-in on the bike path question?
Yeah, so the city has an adopted bike plan. It includes a loop route around town that includes the north segment of River Road. We're currently in the process of submitting that to Slocog for funding for the design phase, and we're considering possibly adding that as a potential budget request.
Any idea on the timing for that, Warren?
It'll depend on funding, but we do believe that we could have it designed within the next 18 months.
Okay, and how would you advise the gentleman to get his input into those funding sources?
So I'd advise him, along with the rest of the public, to be involved in the upcoming city council meetings regarding the budget. I think that's where, you know, key decisions will be made.
Very good. Mr. Strong?
Yes, and I'd like to add that at Slocog, we will be having the needs meetings, and that's a public meeting where you can come in and mention your needs. However, I believe our next funding cycle for grants is not going to be for another two years, so we're probably looking at about two to three years at least, just for a heads-up. Thank you.
Is this an item that the gentleman can sign up on the website to get updated on if it comes before the council again?
I think just generally signing up for the council agendas will advise you of all the upcoming events.
So if you go on the website, you can sign up to be notified when the agendas come out, and you'll be able to see when it comes up on the agenda next. Okay, very good. We move on now, and I'll ask city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
We proceed. Consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is polled for separate consideration. Items polled from consent are usually heard at the end of the meeting. With that, I'll ask council if there are questions regarding the consent calendar or any items to be removed. Seeing none, anyone in the public would like to ask a question about the consent calendar and ask that an item be removed? No one rising in the room?
No callers.
No one online. Very good. So we will bring it back to the city council and?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Strong?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve items 5 through 19.
Second?
And I have a motion by Councilman Strong, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And as a public service, for those who have not availed themselves of the opportunity to look at our agenda online, which by the way is always linked to the staff report, so if you check it online, you'll see the same staff reports that we see. I'll ask our city manager to please give us a brief report on the actions taken on consent tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a robust consent calendar this evening. First item is approval of the city council meeting minutes from 4:00 to 5:00, followed by approval of the city council and DPAC's meeting on 4:09, which was downtown parking. We also have, the next item is a receipt of our warrant register. Next item is reaffirmation of Resolution 21147 approving remote and/or hybrid remote and in-person public meetings. Per Assembly Bill 361, this is a recurring item on our consent calendar, so we can have remote meetings as well as in-person meetings. Next item is the second reading and adoption of Ordinance 1118, adjusting the boundaries of the city council districts based upon the 2020 decennial census and amending municipal code section 2.08015, which is a follow-up on council's actions regarding council districts and adoption of the map. Next item is approval of a cancellation of our May 3 regular city council meeting. We're canceling that meeting or recommending it because council will be attending training in Palm Desert as a group, which it has to do with liability training per CJPI, which is our Joint Powers Insurance Authority, providing some free training for council members across the state. Item number 11 is approval of a resolution of intention to renew the Paso Robles Tourism Improvement District. For those of you that are familiar with Travel Paso, they are removing their tourism improvement district, and there'll be upcoming public meeting on May 17, as well as a public hearing on June 7, where we'll have more discussion about that and provide opportunity for input from the community as well. Item number 12, approval to initiate proceedings for balloting and an annual levy of Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, number one, and annual levy of Drainage Maintenance District, 2008-1, for the next fiscal year 2022 and 2023. We have a couple of new events at City Park. Item number 13 is approval of the Porsche 356 Registry West Coast Holiday, and item number 14 is approval of a festival mosaic both in City Park. Next item is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Pleasant Valley Australia Cemetery District for airport access. So some of you might be familiar with the cemetery, and there's renewed interest in reinvigorating the cemetery and providing more accessible parking out there. So we've entered into an agreement with them to be able to facilitate that. Item number 16 is approval of purchase of fleet replacement items. Number 17 is the approval of a well known as the Butterfield Well. Number 18 is approval of streetlights for new Ardmore Road connection to Union Road. And last but not least is approval of a San Luis Obay Motors and Paso Robles Kia settlement agreement with the city. And that is all there is on the consent.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have a public hearing. Item number 20, 2021 Annual Report on the Implementation of the General Plan. The staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Warren Frazek, Community Development Director. This is our annual report on the status of the general plan. General plan is basically the blueprint for the future of the city. The blueprint calls for the city to reach a population of 44,000 people by the year 2045. That would involve the construction of up to 5,000 new housing units and approximately 4 million square feet of additional commercial, industrial, and office space. So this is our annual report on the progress toward those overall goals that are set by the city council. So we're required by the state to make this annual report. Both the Planning Commission and city council are required to review this report before it's submitted. We do need to submit it to both the State Office of Planning and Research and Housing and Community Development. Planning Commission's reviewed this report on their April 12 meeting. They are recommending it be submitted to the state. So in terms of how this report is organized, there's a section that just focuses on the housing element. The housing element is the number or the housing production that the city needs to plan for that's allocated by the state. And then the additional housing elements are also reported on, or the additional general plan elements, and those consist of the land use, conservation, and open space elements, circulation element, the noise element, the safety element, and then the parks and recreation elements. So in total, the city has eight separate elements. We also track all the amendments to the different elements. Those are reported on. And then due to all the development in the downtown, which is under the Uptown Town Center specific plan, we also are reporting on housing development in that area. So this implementation report before you goes through all the elements and all the programs and objectives of those sub-elements. This report was compiled by input from all the city departments, because the general plan is broad and does cover all city functions. In summary, not including the housing element, there's 240 policy actions. 128 of those are ongoing activities that we continue to pursue. 80 of those have been completed. There's 20 in process, and there's 12 programs that we have still not scheduled for implementation. So in terms of general plan activities and amendments, the land use element has been updated recently. So the Olson-South Chandler specific plan, which is this area, so here's basically Sherwood Road. This is our east side. Here's Creston Road. So here's the Olson-South Chandler specific plan. So we did update the general plan in 2020 for that, adding 1,293 units there. And then later that year, Beechwood, general plan amendment was also processed, allowing for another 911 units. And then last year, the Gateway Annexation or Vonn 46 West was also approved, and that was another land use change. And you'll recall that the circulation element was updated two years ago. Also, the noise element was completely updated two years ago. And then last year, the housing element update was also completed. Our next big step in terms of housing implementation is the zoning code update, which is currently in process. So housing production, that's one of the key metrics that we do need to be reporting to the state. In terms of how we track housing production, there's lots of different ways to look at housing production, and we report it in all different ways to state because they have different things they're looking at. So certificates of occupancy, those are units that were actually finalized for occupancy last year, so there was 32 occupied units. Units under construction, so those are, we've issued permits, but they haven't been occupied right now. We have 72 that are basically under construction. We also have 95 units that are currently in plan check, so those haven't been issued yet, but they could be issued very soon. And then there's another 128 units that are basically kind of in the plan check, getting ready to review process. So each one of these are kind of different indicators. I think the overall trend is that we're seeing an increase in housing. So we're three years into the housing element process, so we are allocated certain units that we need to plan for. That's the regional housing needs allocation that comes down from the state. So the first year of that that we're tracking is 2019. It's basically an eight-year cycle that we're working through. So year one was a really good year for us. So these are the different units by income category. So we have to plan for very low and low-income units, moderate-income units, and above moderate. And you'll actually see in year one, very low and low-income units, we produced almost 80 units there, which is really good. Same thing for year two. So if you come over here in our totals, we're actually doing very well in the lower income and moderate income areas. Our biggest deficiency actually is in the above moderate, which is just the for-sale regular unit. So that is what we see, you know, the need for is just additional production, single-family houses. So our overall allocation is about 1,400 units for the eight-year period. We've built 321 to date. We have another 1,100 that we need to build during the period. So looking forward, we have looked at future trends, and right now, our forecast is that we're going to see a significant increase in housing development within the city. So this chart goes back to 1990. You'll see kind of in the early 2000s, we had a huge peak in housing production. Paso Robles was building about 500 units a year for about six years straight. When the recession hit, housing production pretty much stopped. So since about 2006, we've been averaging about 100 units per year. These last couple of years have actually been fairly low, where we've actually been closer to 50 units per year, which isn't keeping up with the need for housing. That's going to change drastically in the next year or so. So our projections is next year or this current year, that we'll probably issue up to 300 housing permits this year. Next year, potentially up to 600 units, and by 2024, potentially we'll issue 750 units a year. So that's just based on the projects that are in process and have been bought in the two specific plan areas, as well as multifamily projects that are currently approved and going through the permitting process. So we do see that we're going to see a significant update, uptick in housing production, and we have no concerns about meeting what our housing projection needs are. I think our big challenge moving forward is just going to be keeping up with a level of activity from all these projects. Also, you have appointed a Housing Constraints and Opportunity Committee. They were tasked with improving housing production in the city. So the first version of the committee met from 2016 to 2018. They accomplished a number of things, including reducing development impact fees, water and circulation connection fees were reduced, the circulation element was updated, and the traffic impact fees were also updated. Currently, the Housing Constraints Committee is working on the following priorities. One is the zoning code update that'll simplify and streamline the entire zoning code process. An update to the Uptown Town Center specific plans, looking at boundary expansions for that area, and then also identifying additional properties in town that could be rezoned for rental apartment sites. So those are current programs that they're working on that will be coming forward to the Planning Commission and City Council's recommendations. Then, as I mentioned, the specific plans are moving forward. So the Olson plan is currently approved. As I mentioned, 1,293 housing units on 350 acres. That project is mobilizing right now. It will break ground this month. The Beechwood specific plan's probably about six months behind it, another 952 units on 230 acres. That'll be also starting construction in 2002. All right, so just quick summary then. About 95% of your general plan policies have either been completed or in process. We're basically developed about or built 22% of our regional housing need housing units to date, and we expect that we'll be able to meet the whole 1,446 within the cycle. Planning Commission is recommending that the council accept this report and direct staff to submit it to the state of California. And I'll conclude staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so first we start with council questions of clarification, then we invite the public to comment. After that, the council will deliberate what action will be taken. Any council questions? Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, Warren, I think what I'd like to ask again, and maybe to reaffirm with the public too, is that, you know, the 2,100 units that we're seeing on the east side, there's been exhaustive and multiple studies on traffic, which is, I think, what is going to be impacted more to who are here now currently. Can you review some of the helpful things that these developments are going to be doing to help alleviate the traffic issues?
Yeah, so all these projects went through an EIR process, and major folks at the EIR was looking at traffic. And major folks at the EIR was looking at traffic impacts off-site. All these projects were conditioned or required to provide both roads onsite, but also to make a number of improvements off-site. So the entire Niblick Corridor will be improved. Creston Corridor, the Creston Corridor will be improved. Charley Road and River Road will be improved. So usually the typical, the issues where traffic slows down is at the intersections, either the signals. So there's certain lanes that need to be added, certain changes to signals that need to happen. So there's a whole program of different improvements that will happen at different phases during these projects. We're working with both projects to coordinate that because there's an overlap between the two projects. So the city engineer and staff is working and meeting regularly with both developers to make sure that all the traffic improvements are timed and everybody's, you know, coordinated on rolling those out. But that is a requirement, that those are done at certain phases before certain numbers of units are actually completed.
And I think we're seeing that on that 200-unit apartment just north of Food for Less, that that's impacting Creston right now. We're all having to deal with that right now currently. And that's got to really, well, a little pain, little gain. Again, I think that's really going to be helpful on Creston Road corridor.
That's a really good example.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Strong.
Yes, and along that same line, and the one road that wasn't mentioned was Airport. And Airport Road looks like it's going to be constructed all the way through South Chandler Ranch. And then completion of that depends upon the ultimate approval and development of North Chandler Ranch. Is that correct?
Yes, so Airport Road, under the general plan, would go from the airport all the way down to Creston Road. So you can kind of see, here's Creston Road right here. So this is the alignment of Airport Road through Beechwood. This is a new segment. This is the existing segment of Airport Road. And then Olson-South Chandler is going to complete this segment of Airport Road that'll get us to right here. So beyond this is the North Chandler specific plan, which goes all the way to Highway 46 and Barney Schwartz. So that will be the last gap to fill in. And then that will then fit in with the new Airport Road segment that's going to connect up to the airport that we're currently working on in the industrial areas.
And that will give us an entirely new major corridor north-south.
We'll have a whole new arterial connection, basically from Creston Road to the airport for that whole side of town. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions by council?
Well, just to, just a question. With the alignment of the projects coming in on the east side, earlier we were given an update on the fire station. So this, the fire station will actually come first and then all of these homes, correct?
Yeah, so we're, we're being very proactive with the construction of the fire station. It's actually getting built before these projects come online, which is an ideal situation. But that is the purpose. And all these stations have been set up for the ultimate build-out, so they're in the proper location when all these houses are done.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
If there are other council questions, we'll open public comment. First of all, anyone in the room who would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one rise, we will go to the phone lines. I have Jan Albin. Jan, are you with us?
I am.
Welcome.
This is Jan Albin. Hi, thank you. And I'm a resident in Quail Run. When the Olson-Chandler, and I'll just use that one, but we can throw Beechwood in there also. When those projects were approved, if I'm not mistaken, the, and specifically, I can refer to a comment that the city engineer made, I believe all the infrastructure and road improvements were deferred to the end of the project. Or one of them in particular was no improvements needed to be made until 500 and some odd houses were built. So when I look at that, and we know that we already have traffic issues, and we're certainly going to have them with the red-tailed apartments on Creston now, how does the city justify deferring those improvements until they're already into the project or somewhere significantly down the road with those projects?
Thank you, Jan. We'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
I see no one else waiting online. We're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. First of all, could we have a response on the issue of deferring road improvements with the specific plan areas?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, there's an EIR process that goes through and identifies the improvements that are required for the project. So the way development kind of works is it ends up being a partnership between the development and the city or the existing community. And there are certain rules about who's responsible for whose impact. So all the existing traffic impacts basically are the responsibility of the community. The new impacts are the responsibility of the development. So the way it ends up working is we calculate scientifically when this new traffic is going to occur and what new impacts it creates. And those are the responsibility of the development to fix those new impacts, basically. And there's different triggers. So there's certain things that have to happen, like there's some signal improvements on Creston Road that have to happen before the first unit's built. And then at, say, 100 units, there's some other ones. And the caller's right, there are some improvements that aren't required until like the 559th unit. But there's a whole menu of when they're required, but it's all calculated on the traffic model. Now, there are existing traffic problems throughout the community that are existing, and those are the city's responsibility to take care of those. And we do have current CIP projects like the roundabout at Golden Hill and Union Road. That's a good example of an existing project that we're working on. So it is a combination of both the developer contributing improvements and the city making improvements that together basically will address the traffic issues and those solutions.
Thank you for that answer. Okay, let's proceed to council discussion. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, Warren, and just for the public to know that the project on Creston Road with the 200 units, they're actually doing the road improvements in advance of construction. Isn't that right?
Yeah, so that's always been kind of a choke point in Creston Road because Creston Road is supposed to be a five-lane segment in that area, but it's only been basically three and a half lanes there. So before they do anything, they're putting in the road improvements. So we'll have a fully improved five-lane segment that will vastly improve the circulation in that area. So that project will make actually more traffic improvements than it will contribute in terms of traffic, you know, impacts.
And just for clarification on the Olson project, is the first building going out there going to be the workforce housing?
It's quite possible. So there's an apartment complex right here that the Paso Robles Housing Authority is moving forward with, and they want to move fairly quickly. At the same time, there's three other master builders that are picking these up. I think they're all going to be moving as fast as they can. So we're not sure exactly what will be first.
Thank you.
Councilman Hammond.
Warren, thank you for the report on the general plan update. I just want to compliment staff. You guys have been proactive on basically everything, staying ahead of the wave, so to speak. As this is going to be launching, I think, again, your graph was pretty telling. In the next couple, few years, actually, we're going to see a lot of activity, which is always be good to be in front of something like that. So I think it's well done. I appreciate the update.
If there are, Mr. Strong?
I was just going to say, I think thus far, we've done a really good job. This is a great report on what we've been doing. I think there's more to be done coming into the future, and we'll be outlining that, I think, shortly in additional meetings. Possibly some additional amendments to our zoning ordinance, some changes in some of the zoning designations on our, on our general plan or specific plans, so that we can accommodate changes in societal patterns and business patterns within the city. But at this point, what's been done to date is outstanding work, and I compliment the staff.
If there are no further comments, I entertain a motion.
Okay. Maria, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay. So I move that we approve the 2021 general plan annual, annual report and direct staff to submit the report to the state.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We move to item number 21, discussion items, approval of award design contract to upgrade the city-owned downtown parking lots. Deidre Esperanza, welcome back.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. So, whoops. I don't think that's, okay, perfect. So before you, we are asking for you to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with Cannon Corporation to prepare the design documents to refurbish the two downtown parking lots. Number one parking lot is the one adjacent to Marv's Pizza. And the other parking lot, number two, is the one at Railroad and 12th Street. So in fiscal year 2020, 2021, we did have these two parking lots on our capital improvement budget to refurbish. But with the COVID-19 pandemic arriving, it was best that we postponed these two parking lots until we knew the impact of the pandemic to the city's resources. But now that we're on this side of the pandemic, at your last workshop, you made it a priority to improve these two parking lots. So now we're here before you to ask for your recommendation to proceed with preparing the design documents to refurbish the parking lots. So as I said, parking lot number one is the one adjacent to Marv's Pizza. So the purple area is the actual parking. Part of the refurbishment is to also look at the adjacent alleys that connect to this, to this, the, I guess not purple. It's more like lavender. So the two alleys that connect to Park and to Spring Street and to 13th Street will also be reviewed for drainage. And then the other parking lot is the one at Railroad and 12th Street. So the scope of work for the refurbishment is to improve the circulation in the parking lot, to maximize the parking spaces as conditions allow. We also want to, there's no lighting on those parking lots, so we want to review it to see if there's any way we can improve the lighting for those parking lots. We also have some drainage issues, particularly the one next to Marv's Pizza that we want to review. And then, of course, we need to improve the ADA spaces within these parking lots. And as I said, especially the one by Marv's Pizza, we need to review the alleys and the driveways as it pertains to the access to those parking lots. So again, this is what we're asking for you, is to recommend to the city manager, the city manager to enter an agreement with Cannon Corporation to prepare the design documents. Their fee at this time is $93,000. Funding would be from the current year general fund budget savings. Once we have the final project with some cost estimates, we will be presenting the construction cost request to do this as part of your budget year adoption. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council questions of staff? Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Deidre, I, when I read this thing, I had a kind of a problem with the 12th and 13th railroad, you know, lot down there. Because I, again, if this is a contingent property that we might be able to acquire the rest of the block and maybe do a parking structure there, I'm always hesitant about putting a lot of money into something that would get torn up, you know, fairly, hopefully, soon, two, three years out. What kind of improvements are you suggesting or thinking that might happen on that lot?
Oh, you, the one next to Marv's Pizza?
No, no, over on 12th.
Oh, there's no alleys improvement proposed?
That's just surface lot, right?
Yeah, it's resurfacing, maximizing parking spaces, lighting, things of the sort.
Right, so I, do you have any rough cost estimate of what we're going to see coming back on something like that?
Well, the one we did right here sometime back, that was about a $300, $400,000 investment. And, but that one didn't have lighting. So if we want to put lighting here, it's probably going to be in the $400, $500,000 investment.
Yeah.
But if you do put a parking structure over it, the space, the, the surface would be completed, obviously. And so that wouldn't be a redo.
No, well.
So the only redo would be if we put pole lights, then that would certainly be a redo, if we do it, streetlight poles.
Well, again, we've been talking about this a long time, many years, actually. But I'm envisioning where we may have a four-story, you know, parking structure there, where we would have to remove a lot of that soil and come up four, four lots. That would be ideal. That would be the perfect location within a block of the park. All I'm saying is that, you know, I'm a little hesitant about putting, once council makes a direction that this is something we might want to be doing, we don't want to, you know, like, put the cart before the horse and spend a lot of money where we're going to lose it within a couple of years, you see. So that was why I thought if we're going to do the minimum to make it safe, if there's any problems out there, we need to make it safe. But maybe an overhead light, patch, you know, some of the lower parts or something that might be a hole out there for asphalt. That's what I'm suggesting, that this, what you're talking about with engineering, I think, is the majority of it would be the lion's share over on the pizza, Marv's Pizza lot, because that's pretty intricate with drainage and angles and such like that, right? So over on Riverside, or excuse me, Railroad, probably not so much of the pie would be put in that lot, I imagine, right?
Right. I think as far as if we do any resurfacing of that parking lot number two, we wouldn't lose that, whatever investment you made to resurfacing, you may not lose that. But again, the only thing is that parking lot is dark. And so the request was to make it safe and to provide lighting. So then the investment of trenching for the streetlight conduits and the actual poles for the streetlights, that would be the investment that you might lose if the parking structure is built there. On the other hand, we've received comments from the community that if you want to refurbish that parking lot, we want to make it safe and put the lights in. So that would be something you would have to consider.
Yeah, that's when we come back. Obviously, this first amount of money is to get the engineering done on it, and then we'll discuss later after that comes back.
Other questions? Very good. Thank you. We'll open this for public comment. Anyone who's liked to comment, this is your opportunity. I don't see anyone rising in the room, and I'm looking, and I don't see anyone waiting online to comment. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 22XX, authorizing the city manager to enter into contact with Cannon Corp to prepare design documents to refurbish the parking lot adjacent to Marv's Pizza at 12th and Railroad in the amount of $93,000.
I'll say. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gregory, seconded by Councilman Hammond. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say one thing, that a lot of employees have asked for lighting at the parking lot. So I think it's something that's really needed.
Very good.
That was just what I was going to say. But even if we were to do something temporary, I see your point, Mr. Hammond. So I totally agree.
Yeah, and I, and I think too, if we were to put lighting in there, it could certainly be unbuckled and used somewhere else. It's not like we're going to lose it. The infrastructure and the ground, obviously, that'll change, but.
I think the investment, even if it's relatively short-term, the investment in public safety in that lot is probably worth.
This is something we've been wanting to do for quite a long time anyway.
Exactly. Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number 22, fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024, preliminary budget overview.
Has a mouthful, sir. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we have a couple of people that are going to present this evening. Mr. Huat, our Assistant City Manager, as well as our Admin Services Director, Ryan Cornell. Just to give you a brief overview of what we're going to be discussing this evening, as, as you know, we've been diligently preparing our, our next two-year budget cycle and bringing back a litany of items to discuss this evening, including your, your goals that our staff has been working, as I said, diligently to devise work plans to execute some of the high-level projects that you encourage staff to examine. So we'll be discussing some of those this evening. So we'll start off with talking about our city council goals and priorities. Update you on some revenue projections, as well as some options for one-time funding availability using reserves, our J-20 spending plan overview, as well as rolling into preliminary discussion on a potential reorganization that we've been looking at regarding public works. And then we can wrap it up with next steps and any direction from council. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Huat to jump right in.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Councilmember Chris Huat, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, I, as, as Mr. Lewis mentioned, we'll be reviewing some key areas of the budget for the next budget cycle. I just wanted to review with you all. I just wanted to review with you all that, again, as you know, the city is required to adopt a budget by June 30th. This council reviewed the budget process and approved returning to a two-year budget cycle at its February 15th meeting. We also set the budget prep calendar, and that's why we are here this evening before you. The city council also discussed its goals, its vision, and several key budget priority areas on February 26th. So tonight, as we just discussed, we'll be reviewing some key focus areas. I want to make clear what this is tonight and what it isn't. It's not a deep dive into every nook and cranny of the proposed budget for next fiscal year. We're here a little bit ahead of where we would normally be with the budget because we wanted to get some initial feedback and comment from the city council in several key areas. One, we're going back to a two-year budget cycle. Two, we're in a much different fiscal state than we were 12 to 18 months ago, so things have rapidly changed. And three, we have a lot of things, as Mr. Phrase and others have talked about tonight, coming to a head, so to speak, in terms of community. And so there are some decisions that will have to be made on prioritizing available resources for a variety of different projects. So tonight, we wanted to lift up a few key things to talk about with the expectation that we're going to come back in early May and really get into a much deeper dive on a department-by-department basis, but really wanted to get in front of you tonight to make sure that we are on the same path and aligned as we're moving forward. So the key focus areas tonight, Ryan, Mr. Cornell will provide a general revenue projection update, an update on the reserves. He'll talk a little bit about some of those one-time investments that staff will likely be recommending and that council has previously reviewed and considered. We'll talk a little bit more about the preliminary measure J-20 spending plan for next year, and then we'll get into that organizational restructuring that was mentioned. Finally, we'll talk a little bit about next steps, what's our roadmap ahead, what the council and the public can expect as we move this process forward. I pulled this slide from the February 15th slide deck that we presented to you, not that we're going to go line by line, but just to note for the council and the public, that not a lot has changed in terms of the preview of those major budget themes that we had brought to you then. Our economic forecast remains fairly positive, although I would say there are a few dark clouds on the horizon in terms of the economic outlook that is tempering a little bit of our revenue growth projections that Mr. Cornell will mention. Again, there are key initiatives that this council has made a priority over the last several months in preparation for development of the budget. We know we have quite a few infrastructure needs across the community, and again, we're moving into more and more and more of a regulatory type of environment and a growth environment, which is placing demands on our team in terms of capacity, and we'll talk a little bit about that in just a moment. Timeline, we're here on April 19th to talk a little bit more about some of these key areas. We did envision coming back before you the week of May 9th with a date to be determined with that more in-depth workshop, and then again, we'd be circling back around on the 21st with adoption. There is obviously ample time for council feedback both this evening and on the 9th, and that's why we set for this calendar to make sure we capture that. I want to first talk a little bit about city council goals. Again, on the 26th, this council met, I thought we had a very in-depth and robust discussion on the work plan for the upcoming cycle. This council provided strategic direction and several updates to those goal areas. Subsequent to that, on March 9th, our executive staff held a facilitated strategic planning session. That was very fruitful, in my opinion. It got us together for a day to really talk about the council goals, understanding what the work plan looks like for the next couple of years, and work to align the department work plans with, again, the updated council goals. And then, of course, we're here tonight for consideration and ratification of those council goals. So attached in your packet, and don't worry, we'll not go line by line this evening, but attached in your packet was an updated version of the city council goals, and you'll see several key changes. And although it looks like a lot has been changed and added, I would tell you that it's really more of a reflection of vetting out some of those key action items and priorities that staff brought forth from their work plan to tie back to your goals. So what that document shows is it reflects the changes as discussed and requested by the council on the 26th. It took the department work plans in part that were developed and, again, focused at that staff workshop and aligned those and brought those to the forefront under the appropriate priorities and goal areas. We did use that two-year budget horizon as the backdrop in which to develop those goals. And what you'll see probably most notably is added, we added very specific measurable action items that speak to the city council goals from the department work plans, and that was critical for our office to make sure that these items were actionable, and at the end of the day, they could be measured. And we could come back to you 12 months from today and talk to you about the progress we've made, and hopefully in two years, to talk about a 100% completion of those goals. So again, what we're seeking tonight is your approval, and we're certainly happy to walk through any of those you have questions on, but I was not intending to go line by line this evening unless there were specific questions. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ryan for a few slides. We'll come back and talk a little bit more about the reorg and some other miscellaneous items, and then we'll move directly into public feedback and council questions.
Great, thank you, Chris. This is City Council Ryan Cornell, Admin Services Director. So I'm going to jump right into it. Right here is the, kind of the general revenue forecast, and it's kind of breaks it down by the different components. And what Chris kind of mentioned earlier is true. When we presented the financials update at the council workshop, not a whole lot has changed since that time. We updated the baseline budgets based on department inputs, that increased expenses a little bit, but then when we looked at revenue projections, they increased it a little bit too, so it was kind of, for the most part, kind of a net wash. So the numbers that we kind of see here and that was in the staff report are very similar to what was presented to the city council back in February time. I do want to make two kind of notes. In next month, May 11th, we have our meeting, our quarterly meeting with our HCL consultant on sales tax, and so we'll really get a deeper dive on where we're at with sales tax activity. As you know, and as I've kind of said in the past, coming out of the COVID year, you know, yes, we saw a little flat decline in sales tax, and yeah, we saw a significant increase in that first year in 2020, 21, where sales tax increased by about 18%. So we kind of write, okay, that was anticipated, we knew about it, now we're going to get back to normal, normalcy, but this year we're projecting to do another 16% increase in sales tax. And so there is a lot of, kind of even more of a question mark, in my opinion, than it was during the pandemic, of how long is this sustainable? And I think we kind of have a general consensus that we know that 17, 15% year-over-year growth is just not achievable. So for the forecast, and as you can see up here on the charts in 22, 23, and 23, 24, yes, we're seeing revenue growth, we're seeing revenue's increase, but not nearly as significantly as they were in the past. Another item I want to note too, on this bar graph where it says sales tax, that includes all three sales tax measures, includes just the normal 1%, Bradley Burns, includes the J-20, 1% override, and the E12. So that's why you kind of see a bigger jump at 21, 22, because J-20 is fully implemented and received in that year. So as you can see, we're projecting revenues in the forecast of the budget period to be just under $70 million in each one of those years. Property taxes is pretty much flat, right, with the Proposition 13 limits there. We're just projecting 3% growth in the first year, or I'm sorry, 4% growth in the first year and a 3% growth in the second year, so a little bit above historical averages, but we kind of know the housing market is really, really hot at the time too, so we'll reflect those revenue changes in the future. And then lastly, on TOT, again, it's amazing, coming out of the pandemic year, right, 40% revenue growth year-over-year. This year, we're projected to probably exceed 25% growth on top of that. So very likely we'll be surpassing $9 million worth of TOT revenue for the city in this fiscal year, which is obviously record-breaking in the report. It's modest at 8.8 million right now for the rest of this year. But like I said, moving forward, we're not seeing any sort of signs of negative growth or going downward, so we're just kind of slowing down the pace moving forward. And as I had mentioned during the February workshop too, the kind of the overlying, the revenues over baseline expenses has been kind of hovering right around $4 to $5 million a year, so it's kind of our surplus, it's kind of our, I guess, wiggle room. And so because we've kind of seen those revenues over expenses over the last three or four years, our general fund reserves are actually very healthy, they're starting to approach 60% now, and it's $20 million over the minimum threshold, which is 30%. So we are kind of devising, looking at that pot of money, wanting to dedicate specific projects to those dollars. And so in the proposed budget in the couple of years, you'll see a lot of one-time capital projects that are going to be requested, and kind of get to that, you know, the large, the shovel-ready, so that when we need grant opportunities and grants from the state, we're shovel-ready, we're ready to go. And so that's, you're going to see that as a big piece in this year's budget. So just kind of a preview of those higher priority projects are, these aren't anything new, I'm very familiar with them. It's the State 46 East and the Airport Road over crossing. Just the right-of-way alone, which is kind of what we're targeting in for this next two-year cycle, is going to be, is estimated to be about $9 million. So remember, if our general fund reserves is at 20 million, almost half of that is just in right-of-way acquisition for that eventual over crossing. And then, yeah, and this, the PSNE on the over crossing is slated to be our shares, one and a half million, so CAG is going to kick down another matching share of the same amount too, for the plant specifications and estimates there. Some of the other priority projects, the downtown parking lot improvements and lighting, as what Ms. Bronson just had mentioned. And then let's not also forget the one-time money we got from the federal government with ARPA, the American Risk Plan Act, where the city has about 4.1 million allocated to quote-unquote "infrastructure" projects, where we're kind of eyeing Self-Fine Street as that project, because per development agreement, we're required to build that bridge, so we have the money, let's go ahead and move forward with that. There's some additional projects that we're currently kind of weighing through, and I know, Mr. Hammond, one of your comments in the past is, okay, these projects are great, how do we fund them? And so we're still not quite there yet, but these are kind of the projects that we're looking at and trying to figure out what we can fund and what we cannot fund, because that's kind of a recurring thing. Yes, the needs are greater than the resources we have, and so that's what we're looking for council tonight for, is to kind of send us in the right direction, or at least like, yes, we're good with the priority projects you have listed here. We'd really like to see, I can pick one up, spaceport, move up to the priority projects or anything. So moving on to Measure J-20, if you recall from last year, we had anticipated or attempted to try to do a, almost like a 12-year spending plan for the J-20 revenues, but at that time, we needed a little more time. So we did get kind of that basic needs package where we did add staffing to the police and fire and kind of front-loaded some of the street projects. So the Measure J-20 expenditure plan moving forward still maintains all those previously approved staffing positions, and then it does, and we'll go into a little bit more detail here in the next couple of slides, on increasing those staffs in those departments in both police and fire. This will only boost, you know, public safety and community response times, very similar to what Jonathan was concerned about the last city council meeting, with meeting a strategic plan, right? All the proposals in the J-20 plan meet those goals of the city council. The Measure J-20 plan also includes implementing the lateral recruitment program for the police department. We're kind of currently in the meeting for a process with the Police Officers Association on getting some sort of either one-time signing bonus or some sort of incentive to get police officers, experience these police officers on our force. So we did set some funds aside in order to fully implement that program. And then, and I had mentioned too, back in February time, we'll have about $4, $4.5 million of kind of unspent, unappropriate J-20 funds, because it's taken such a long time to implement these staffing plans. And so part of the plan is to kind of take that six-year street plan and kind of jump it forward a little bit, so we could do more streets in the two-year horizon. So just on the police department side, this is the personnel costs, and we kind of tried to phase this kind of in three different phases. The first phase is already approved, that's our existing positions with the dispatch supervisor, a records clerk, which we're going to kind of reclassify to an administrative assistant, you'll kind of see that there in phase two. And then the implementation of seven new police officers, so that was kind of the first program. I'm happy to say that we are really, really, really close on getting all seven of those positions funded or onboard and on staff. So we're making good progress more recently on our police officer recruitment. But that pretty much just means that come July 1, what we're going to request is, here's kind of our new list of positions that we want to use J-20 for. So the first year of the budget cycle, the staff is recommending to add one commander, seven police officers, another dispatcher, and an administrative assistant, and then reclassing our current part-time training coordinator to a full-time status. That'll take place in fiscal year 22, 23, and then for the second year of the budget, adding the deputy police chief, the sergeant, seven more officers, so 27 officers in totality, or I'm sorry, 21 officers in total after this last year is implemented, and then a second dispatcher. So as you can see, the proposed budget, a fully loaded year cost would be close to about $5 million, which takes about a little less than half of the overall J-20 money, so that's about $12 million. In addition to personnel, here are kind of the one-time costs that have been identified for them. Obviously, when we add on police officers, they need vehicles to patrol them, and then guns and tasers and safety equipment as well. So we have those plugged in there, and then as well as improvements to the second one-way property in order to get the substation going, it's currently in design, so we're thinking we'll build the construction this time next year. On the police, or I'm sorry, on the fire department side, again, all of the pre-existing positions are carried over, that includes the administrative captain, and it includes six safer, or I'm sorry, six firefighters, three of which are a part of that second safer firefighter grant that the city received. And so it's, the expenses shown on this chart are net of that grant revenue, so that's why you kind of see a bigger jump in '24 than in '23, because the grant ends in the fiscal year ending 2023. In addition to the six that were approved last year, and because the original six safer grant employees expired, we're going to rotate and move the funding from, for those original six into Measure J-20. That was actually the very first statement in that resolution, that when we're going to use Measure J-24 was to bring those original six safer grant firefighters on, and so we're doing that. And then, as you know, from the last city council meeting, the proposal of having a deputy fire chief and a fire prevention specialist is being recommended in that very first year in order to read the fire strategic plan. Some one-time costs on the fire department, there is a fire hose replacement, it is costly, it's a little over $100,000, a little over $100,000. And then that's going to be in the first year, and then in the second year, we'll have to have three fire engines replaced. One of the engines was actually approved on consent earlier this evening, on those on that vehicle listing, so we'll have two additional engines to replace. And that $2.6 billion is just the funding shortfall, because we have a replacement fund set aside, so we've been collecting money all along with the cost of the fire engine that skyrocketed in the last six months or so, so we have a little bit of a funding gap in between there that we're recommending J-20 to fund. And then lastly, after the construction of Fire Station 3, we'd like to get the construction of that to create this tower in the back there. And then lastly, with Measure J-20, is the street component, and right now, we're really focused on that six-year street plan that was approved by city council back in, I think, February 2020. And so as of right now, all of our, kind of our road meeting stops at the end of that six-year marker, and so what we're just taking is taking those lot of years and pushing everything forward, and over the next 12 to 18 months, we're going to kind of refill in what we move forward of the strategy of what streets are going to be paved and maintained In addition to that, we parted that $4.5 million of unspent J-20, it would be to advance some of these street projects, as well as kind of, you said, assign the about $600,000 to just kind of address some deferred signing, marking needs right away, so that's sort of kind of more safety traffic needs there as well, and augment the street or the gas stack program. Oh, and that's the end of my spiel, so I'm going to turn it back over to Chris.
So we also want to talk a little bit more about the organizational restructuring component of the proposal this evening for discussion. As we discussed on February 26th, this was an item that we introduced at that point in time based upon evaluation by the city manager's office and consultation with several departments. There was an opportunity to kind of take a look at the organization, again, talking about changes in what we are doing as an organization, both from a capacity standpoint, a growth standpoint, a regulatory standpoint. There's an opportunity to realign how the organization is structured, which would come with some proposed positions, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But tonight, what we want to talk to you about But tonight, what we want to talk to you about is an organization, a reorganization that would, I believe, impact for existing departments and create a new department. Again, talking about those regulatory and operational environments that have continued to evolve as we, especially on the utility side, that has become more and more and more of, again, a highly regulated environment, especially at the state level and additional capacity is necessary there. We also are, you know, finding that, that obviously there's a need for comprehensive and specialized types of management and focused staffing efforts to address community priorities. This reorganization will help align like-type operations to be able to more quickly and comprehensively address some of those key areas. We look to improve succession planning and professional development of staff with this reorganization. Our city is not alone. Both the public and private sector have gone through a complete kind of reevaluation in terms of employee development, succession planning. It is not the norm for many of our staff, especially entry-level staff, to stick around, unfortunately, right now, to find themselves being able to become more and more and more responsible for different things and becoming, you know, coming into a supervisor or management type position. So we're looking for ways we can improve succession planning, build that capacity while also, again, addressing those city council goals and community priorities. Again, final board point here is increasing that capacity as we want to achieve more as a community, as we continue to grow, as the environment becomes more and more complex. Additional capacity will allow the team to, within reason, get at more of these items that come our way each and every day. So let's jump in, I'll try to be very brief. We tried to put together a slide that gives the council and the public a summary of what's moving where. So right now, and again, I'll, I'll try to move through this quick, in the city manager's office, you'll see the first column shows what would be added to that respective department that's on the far left column. The, the column to the far right shows what's being removed or realigned out of that specific department. So for example, in the city manager's office, no new additions, no unit or division additions, but we are looking to remove or realign the information technology services unit to the administrative services department to essentially put most of our internal service functions under one umbrella. With that being said, in that department, we're looking to remove the utility billing component and put that with the new utilities department to align again those operations. On the public works side, you're, you're going to see the most movement between the public works and the community services department, again, trying to align some like-type operations and create some efficiencies. So we are proposing to move the medians and trees, landscape and lighting, events and facilities function to the public works department, again, removing those utility functions that are currently in the public works department. On the community services side, we're not proposing to add any units, but are, again, looking to move those items that I, or those units I just mentioned to public works. Again, we've talked a little bit more about creating that utilities department, so that is reflected here. This would not be done without some potential investment in staffing to create additional span of control and capacity. And so we've broken it out in three phases, and these do not necessarily align with a fiscal year, but we wanted to articulate to the council and to the public the order in which we think those positions would need to be added and likely filled before we could start to build that span of control and that capacity. So the first phase would include a utilities director, which would be a department head equivalent for the new department, an operations manager in the public works department that would oversee a portfolio of units, and then a community, in the community services department, looking to bolster the parks and trails unit with a supervisor, again, to create that broader span of control as we get into more park maintenance specialist positions, more median and tree maintenance specialists and solidways coordinator position as part of phase two. And then again, finally, more maintenance specialists, there's a theme here, in phase three, a total of 10 positions or about $1.3 million. The primary source of funding for these positions, with some exception, be the general fund. There are a few that would be fee-supported through the utility side of the house. Wanted to quickly mention, while it's not here, it is, is an attachment to the staff report, we tried to, again, succinctly put together a, a city organization chart that reflects these changes and movements, so you can get a better sense of where the different units would go. If we are looking for additional detail by department, we're happy to provide that in advance of our, our next meeting. I also wanted to take a moment tonight and talk a little bit about some miscellaneous items and note that you'll likely see as we move forward and that staff is recommending. The first is to look at those organizations that we have current agreements with, specifically the Chamber, Main Street and Line Alliance. I've included the annual compensation, their current agreements there on the right, but we are looking, based upon some feedback and discussions with those groups, to align the terms of those agreements with the budget process or with the budget cycle, so to move those to their two-year term, so there's some continuity in funding. That was something that we received some feedback on from the groups in a strategic planning session with them, and we felt it was, it was something that was reasonable with obviously the proper checks and balances and making sure that they are performing and bringing value, which, which we know that they are, but bringing value to, to the community and to the council. I wanted to highlight a few things on the economic development side while I had at the moment. Of course, we've been going full, you know, pedal down here in the economic development side of the house. We're going to be bringing forward likely a contract for the updated economic development strategic plan, probably prior to the end of this fiscal year is what I'm anticipating, but we will be looking to complete and implement that in the next budget cycle, so we are planning some capacity around that. There's business outreach and opportunities for collaboration with other community stakeholders as we go out and try to, again, once we have those recommendations on the strat plan, making sure we're in front of the right people in, in trying to implement what we're trying to implement there with our, our economy. Mr. Sloan is also evaluating some different market analysis tools that'll be helpful for us as we move forward in determining not who is, is spending here and now and what our economy looks like now. We've got a good sense, but these tools really dive down and give him some more granular information. So we're looking at building out a budget for, for him to do that. Obviously, Spaceport and feasibility study, next steps, we've talked a little bit more about what that horizon looks like, and of course, the broadband plan in conjunction with the city of Atascadero. Other items and note that you're likely going to see some additional information that'll come before you. Obviously, we're, we're talking about the outcome of the homeless services ad hoc, not here tonight to talk about that in particular, I just wanted to note that, based upon that outcome and council direction, there will likely, or could be, I would phrase it as potential change there. And then, of course, we have our library and recreation strategic plan implementation that are high on our radar, that we would, again, like to incorporate as we move this proposal forward. I've listed some other miscellaneous citywide items, I won't go through every one of them. I did want to highlight the grant writing item, that is something that Mr. Lewis, myself and Mr. Cornell have been discussing and evaluating firms that provide potential capacity building for the city in terms of being aware of grants and then also helping the city write and manage grants. And there's quite a bit of money out there, as we know. I think this would be a potential annual contract to help us get at some of those dollars, leverage outside funding, be able to potentially then capture more local dollars for other priorities that the council has. I did want to make a note, and I didn't intentionally omit it, but we do have labor contracts coming up for a term here in the not-too-distant future, and so we'll have to make some consideration for those as we begin to formalize things. So with that, I am done with the presentation this evening and happy to answer any questions along with others in the room. But what we are looking for tonight is seeking any additional feedback, clarifications, questions, but ultimately hopefully approval on those city council goals. And then we'll be reaching out in the not-too-distant future to coordinate schedules for that next budget workshop, where we're going to be bringing back those specific department budgets with supplemental requests and enterprise fund review, full capital improvement plan review and any other feedback or analysis that needs to occur between now and then. But I would expect at that point in time, you will have a document in front of you with every number and everything that will be proposed in, in the budget for the upcoming two-year cycle. I just want to take a quick moment and thank you all for your guidance and direction and thanks staff for their assistance up to this point. Just a really, really excellent team behind me that has really helped get us to this point. I look forward to moving the ball down the field, so to speak, to May 9th, and I'll defer to city manager Lewis for any final comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, so yet you can see staff's been diligent, hard at work, trying to bring this all together as we promised. Lots of changes, I think that you'll see lots of proposals to start using some of the, the savings that we have to get some of these projects that have been deferred over the last few years through COVID and, and bring some of these long-term goals to fruition, whether it's the annexation at the south end of town or the transformation of the airport and the boys' school, all the way out to our development areas, addressing areas in need within the organization to grow, as well as our parks. So a wide litany of proposals and work plans that should hopefully meet your goals, and we're all ears from this point.
Thank you. As usual, questions first and public comment, then discussion. Mr. Gregory.
Yeah. I have 72 questions, I'll try to cut it down to 20.
Any particular order?
Hopefully I can answer something for you too. So Ryan, could I have you come back up here and help us a little bit? A lot of this is more information gathering for me, but they're questions. So what, what is the exact or as close projection as possible for the TOT for '21, '22?
As far as annual revenue?
Yeah, what is your target?
We're going to be right around nine million dollars this year.
Nine million? And then on your, on your chart, you had an item that says annexation and growth planning. Can you tell me what that is?
I had that on my chart.
Or maybe it was on Chris's chart? I hate to have you guys get up and sit up back down.
Councilmember Gregory, I believe that refers to some discussions we've been having internally about the Mill Road area, and Mr. Fraz can probably chime in, but there's some potential planning costs associated with consideration of growth in that area.
All right. Ryan, back to you on J 20. Could you bring up your chart on J 20 funds for me? And by the way, I want to say, this is a really great presentation because we're seeing it now, I just want to say thank you for bringing it forward so we get our questions early. So I'm seeing numbers, 13.4 million, 13.9 million, is that the projected revenue for the coming years?
Yes.
Just for J 20?
Just for J 20.
Just for J 20? Okay. And I don't see it anywhere, but I'm assuming we're about the five and a half million for the, the other half supplemental, is that right?
Y-yes, yes, correct.
Okay. And then in the, if you could go forward to one-time spending projects, if you could look at that for me, please. Oh wait, so, yeah, that'll be fine. So I'd like to understand, the Union Road over crossing, P S and E local match of 1.5, what is that?
I actually turned that one over to Dita since she'll-
Projects.
Okay.
Do you recall the adopted or the soon-to-be-adopted improvements at the one, the 46 East Union Road intersection is to do an over crossing?
Right.
And Slow Cog has set aside $1.5 million for the P S and E of that over crossing with the caveat that the city matched with another 1.5 for a total of $3.0 million for P S and E.
So what is P S and E?
A Plan, Specifications and Estimates, AKA Design.
Perfect, thank you. And then, Ryan, you have State Route 46 in the first line of about nine million. So that would include the property purchases for the Werewell Bridge and in and around the overpass on 46, is that correct?
Yes.
Good. And the down, the South Line Street alignment for 4.1 million, is that something that, does any of that go towards a bridge or is that just the realignment for the road?
So the, the South Line Street project overall, it is, includes the road realignment and the bridge piece of it. So in totality, 16 million for the road alignment and for the bridge. Now, we do know a portion of the road of realignment will be reimbursed by the developer, that's a condition of his project. But so we are kind of looking at the, the South Line Street as the bridge and the road realignment as one overall project. There's $4.1 million of ARPA money that's available that we're suggesting and recommending be funded towards it. Obviously, there's a still a funding shortfall and that would have to either be local resources grant or potentially debt financing.
And then my final questions are on that one page of the reorganization. So can we just go to the new utilities department? I think there's a cost page there for staffing. Yeah, there we go. So I, I just need some clarification. So I see the utilities director and then I see publics to work, public works. So is this a operations manager or is it going to be a public works director? That's a question.
So we have an existing public works director, so we don't need to add that position. So the new position would be the utilities director. The, the operations manager would be a manager that, remember, we're trying to create capacity within the organization. So one of the things that we've looked at is we have several managers that are essentially supervising multiple departments within the, within the organization, cross-managing. So to create capacity and to better align that operations manager, one of the positions that we're looking at is being able to align stormwater with street maintenance crews to be able to synergistically use them to better address not only our road conditions but our stormwater conditions as well.
And then going down to community services, and I just want clarification, I'm not questioning the budget. We have a community services parks and trail supervisor, then we have a community services park maintenance specialist, and then we have a median tree maintenance specialist times two for both those departments, public works. Does a community services trail supervisor supervise the community service park maintenance group?
So if you move down into your organizational chart, hopefully that's attached, you can see kind of how all of these align a little bit better and where they're moved to. So within the community services area, we're trying to, again, create capacity for what we currently have planned and what we're hoping to implement possibly in the future, realizing that our parks and our trails, and in particular, some of our trails are not currently managed to the degree that we would hope they would, and creating capacity for possibly a ranger program into the future as well as, as taking care of the, the current needs that we have within there, within that particular division. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to focus my glasses to look at those particular org chart additions.
I'll study that.
If you don't, if you, Mr. Lewis, if you don't mind jumping in-
Thank you.
But to directly answer the question, will those park maintenance report to the parks and trail supervisor? Yes.
Yes, okay. And then I see these phasing programs, and it's kind of exciting to see three phases in two years, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, the, the phasing is not necessarily indicative of fiscal years, they're, they're more kind of set of, of a priority of, in order to get the organizational restructure, we, we need those top three positions set first, right? And then we can kind of support with the individuals after the fact and kind of phase it in that, that way. This, I, I would actually more call maybe the priority, but I didn't want to discount the-
And the funding, the fundings for these position is just spread out of the general fund surplus?
A majority of the cost is out of the general fund. Obviously, some of the ones we can't send to the utilities waters, but, you know, I, just off the top of my head, I'd say it'd be like a 90 to 10 split.
And I have a technical question. So the utilities director could get paid out of those funds?
Correct.
And does the public works director currently get paid out of those funds?
They do. So that would be another adjustment, we'd have to make the new public, the existing public works director would then be 100% funded by the general fund.
Okay. And then I think that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong, then Councilman Heaven.
Yes, thank you. Staying on J 20 to some extent, just for public clarification. Staying on J-20 to some extent, just for public clarity, what percentage of funds, because we saw that thing as streets, maintenance, and streets, roads, and also public safety. So what percentage is going to streets and what percentage is going to public safety?
So for this fiscal year 21, 22, the majority of Mr. J-20 is actually going to funding Fire Station 3. There was almost a $7 million allocation to Fire Station Number 3 out of J-20 this year. It's frustrating to me is I know that I have the chart, I have the Excel sheet with all the percentages up there. If you give me two seconds, let me just pull that up real quick. I want to make sure I give you a proper answer.
All right, good.
I'm interested in transparency for the public as well, so they understand.
Yes, Mr. Strong, too. We also have the supplemental cell stack oversight committee as well, which we do do a deep dive into all of the J-20 allocations. So like I said, the majority of the funding for this year, about 54% of it is going to go towards Fire Station Number 3. The next biggest allocation is actually going to fund the shortfall of the six-year street plan. That's right around 18%. And then as far as personnel goes, because it's taken so long for us to get the police officers onboard, we're projected to only use 3% of the overall J-20 funds towards police, 2% towards fire, and only 1% towards streets.
Okay.
But those allocations will increase moving forward once we.
And in the second year that you're proposing, what are you proposing? In the, because this is about budget, right?
Correct. So for the Police Department and at a personnel, we're looking at about $3 million. Then those are full-year costs, so we know that it's going to take some time to get this implemented. And then $5 million in the second year. And then for the Fire Department, it's almost $2 million in that first year and then $2.4 million in that second year.
And, and streets and roads?
And then streets and roads, we're rolling maintaining the current staffing of two additional maintenance, street maintenance personnel, just kind of a very back-of-the-ville calculation of about $100,000 per position.
$7 million and then 2.5.
And then, yeah, funding the, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Then over on, I, see, I'm used to, usually when we get these budget presentations, it's by department. None of this was by department. It was by function. And I'm wondering where the functions are, and maybe this is for Chris rather than you, but we had prepare for community growth, but there's no mention anywhere in state and federal mandates and support available. Because we have mandates from them that require costs, and then we have support available that provide us some funding.
Yes.
Where does that appear?
So Councilmember Strong, we certainly recognize both the regulatory aspects of the state and federal governments, as well as the funding opportunities. And so what we were trying to do tonight, again, typically, we would not be before you until May with what you just described, kind of a department by department, and then a city budget outlook that's all kind of wrapped up together. Again, given the changes and the transition in leadership and some other things that have occurred over the last 12 to 18 months, we were trying to get ahead of some of that in May with more of a kind of a call, a cherry pick discussion this evening on some key topics that we wanted some additional feedback and input on before we made some final decisions and actually started to put ink on paper that would be in front of you. Not that it can't be changed, but ink on paper in a comprehensive document in May.
Okay, so is that the same thing that under governance then and with different presentation in May? I'm sorry, I have a family member who doesn't understand I'm in a city council meeting. So I will have to just let her go. Under collaboration, I see A and B, but I don't see a C, state and federal government monitoring, collaboration, and advocacy.
Under the goals, if that's some feedback that you'd like us to add before you approve, we can do that this evening and make that change.
And D, I would be looking at cooperation and participation in JPA commitments.
Absolutely. We can take.
Because we have a lot of joint powers agreements that we're party to, that we have commitments to.
Absolutely. If that's where the council in the motion, we can make those changes as you consider approval of those goals.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Okay. Thank you. I think what I was going to focus on, Ryan, I guess, and Chris, but was the organizational chart. And I mean, your goals that we have been putting out there and your plan to meet those goals are well done, in my opinion. But my main question was on that organizational chart. Matter of fact, I don't know if you can get the last, in our staff report, the last page shows the whole, that would have been nice to have up to kind of, because it really clearly explains what you're trying to do with staffing and everything to meet these goals. But the restructuring, the next page right there is actually what I was looking for with the numbers on it. Is it sustainable? In other words, the load on the general fund to sustain these new folks, when, is this set up, I guess, for the next two year? We're doing a two-year budget, so this would be phased in the next two cycles of our budget?
That's, yeah, that's the envision. These 10 positions will be phased in over the next, yeah, two years.
Right.
And just to kind of remind where we're at on just looking at current revenues versus kind of current line baselines, we're kind of still in that $5 million range of revenues exceeding expenditures. And so, yes, that fills that, that's enough of a buffer so that we can start implementing this plan and then come by the end of the second year.
And that was, that was my question, Ryan, is it sustainable? In other words, bringing these people on and meeting these goals and are we going to, is our city revenue is going to be gaining also to be able to sustain them in the future?
Yeah, I do. I think with the implementation plan on phasing this in the kind of way we have outlined, you know, every step of the way, right, even with our quarterly budget updates to City Council, we'll know as long, you know, where our revenue projections are on par likely, right, because we tend to budget revenues considerably that, you know, our revenue estimates are actually going to be exceeded. And so we could get in a feel more comfortable moving on to kind of that next phase. But long-term, big picture, this is kind of where we want to land.
Okay. The main, the other question I had, kind of the side question, is I know that our airport, our airport manager's retiring. I didn't see any other, we were talking about maybe two people replacing them with the spaceport and everything. There really isn't any slots that I see here that are kind of thinking in the future that we may be doing two folks out there. So it looks like we're still having just the one airport manager in this scenario.
Yeah, I think in this particular scenario, we're anticipating replacing Mr. Oxboro's position until we get something more definitive from council regarding funding our regional partners and really making sure that we want to go that direction. At that point, it would seem appropriate to allocate a position specifically for that as part of whatever budget or spending package that council sees related to spaceport in particular.
Right. Okay, thank you, Ty. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions, Councilwoman Garcia?
Very good.
Any other questions, Mr. Gregory?
Just a quick question, Ryan, while you're up. The police substation will come out of the J-20 funds for next year, correct?
That's the.
Okay. That's it, thanks. Thank you.
If there are no other council questions, there's our organization chart people should be able to see. I'll open this for public comment. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to comment on this issue? I see no one coming forward. I see no one in line online. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. I would just like to toss out there, this is, in many ways, a new way of looking at the way we do business in the city. I mean, we have some pretty traditional department by department by department, and we're changing some of that around, I think, for various reasons, which is good. I do want to make a couple of comments on what I think should be underscored here. First of all, the notion that we have a healthy reserve and probably healthier than we haven't had in a long time, which is good news because going into the pandemic, we certainly did not have that expectation. And I think our opportunity right now is to allow ourselves the freedom to use a portion of that reserve to address some of these one-time costs, these one-time items that we just haven't been able to afford in the past. I'm not suggesting that we spend the reserves down dangerously low, but I know that when we were anticipating the worst during the pandemic, we were talking about taking reserves from about 50% down to 30 or 35%. That is much healthier than most other cities have in reserves, and for the purpose of making use of those monies to address some of these one-time costs, I'm personally in favor of that. Secondly, I realize that a lot of the goals, particularly the new goals that emerged recently, things like broadband, things like spaceport, they, again, these are things that are outside of the box for the city of past rebels. We really don't have a one-size-fits-all way to deal with these things. But I think what we need to do going forward is we need to make sure that we incorporate those new ideas, those new projects in our mainstream of funding. What I didn't see here, and I think that we need, since we've said that economic development is a priority of the city, I think we need to establish some sort of economic development budget, some operating fund for economic development, so that we have the opportunity to follow up on broadband issues, to follow up on spaceport issues, if we need to, to go to conferences, to produce assets such as audiovisual if necessary. We need to have that type of flexibility so as these opportunities manifest themselves, we're able to react to them quickly. So I'd like to see a little more flesh in the bones with respect to that. But other than that, I think it's a great report. I'm really excited about the potential for reorganization and for the potential of getting some pretty large items off our plate, which we've been working on for a long time. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I'd like to copy your words a little bit. I think the organizational chart is a great idea, and it's a great time to do it when we have funding to accomplish it. I, I like the, I like the whole budget presentation. I will caution that we should take this carefully and not say, okay, stamp of approval, but I like the direction it's going. I think it's really important to understand we do have a potential recession coming at us from all financial efforts right now, but I do like that. I think that it's important to include all aspects of our city council goals, which Steve mentioned, and I think we should bring those forward. I also think that on the economic development side of things, I think that we should also, I don't know how to, I'll also say it, then just smooth things out with our three partners so they can just have a two-year budget, work that out. It was very important in the meeting that Chris and I attended for the three of them meeting. And then at the same time, shore up our economic developer, who are development person, whoever that is, Paul, right now. And I think we should focus on that, but we don't have to expand on it, but focus on it because with spaceport and all the money we're going to be needing for all the bridges and everything, I think it's really important. I'm generally in favor of this, and I think that as long as everybody gets the direction they want in there, I think that it's a good report. So thank you.
Thank you. I've got hands up, but first, I think the City Manager wanted to make a comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So just related to the economic development aspect of it, we do have a line item budget in, or line item in the budget for economic development. It wasn't highlighted particularly in here, but it will be in your next packet that addresses all of those things. We've met with Mr. Sloan, I've met with Mr. Huat, as well as Mr. Cornell regarding the need to make sure that we bolster that and have the available resources to support the many aspects of what we're trying to do, including the eventual implementation of whatever economic development strategy that is adopted by the city council. So that's a big part of what you'll see is in the upcoming final documents.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Councilman Strong, then Councilman Hammond?
Yes, and I would like, I don't know if we have to amend this report to add that C and D that I mentioned, which, but I would hope that we have a line item in under the manager city council, either in a general item or something that specific, is specific to our state and federal government monitoring, collaboration, and advocacy, as well as cooperation and participation in JPA commitments. So however that we want to have that, just so that it's understood that in our approval that we would like.
So I'm anticipating, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to have a motion basically to accept this with the comments made by the council be taken into consideration for the final drafting of the budget.
Yeah, so if the, if the items within this particular discussion item for you meet with your approval, then we would hope that you adopt the proposal as it is. If there are specific items that you want amended or added, I would ask that you be very specific about those in your motion so we can make sure that those come back.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ty actually answered my question. That was regarding the Economic Development Department and how we might be funding that to grow and basically be more strong than what we have. And I'm comfortable with where we are right now with that answer and just moving forward the process, we'll see how it's going to fly.
Very good. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make a comment on the organizational department. I know that the city staff has been what you would call wearing multiple hats. And when I saw the report come to us, I was just kind of glad to give each department a little bit of air to breathe and know that we want to support them to build the organization and be able to give more staff to them. As our community is growing, and we just saw the housing, you know, we're bringing on more parks, more trails, more bike paths. I just believe that this is a perfect time to get this organization and be able to back our staff with that. I had a question on the, where would the community, I know Shawna does right now, is she considered the civic or the community part of it?
Yes, Councilwoman, she is considered a civic engagement coordinator.
Okay, and so on that budget, we will see how much we, she is allotted for, because I know we spoke on our goals and our workshop about giving the community more, we talked about more social media, more awareness to the community, and having more maybe workshops off-base type things.
Yes, Mr. Huat and Shawna Howenstein have been working together to build a more robust budget for her particular area, which includes things that we've currently implemented in, under our current budget, which is being able to engage, I think you experienced it at our last council meeting where we took some pictures. We're also obtaining photographs and what they call B-roll for videos to be able to expand our social media presence with more engaging stories and information, as well as obtaining drone footage and other things to really kind of soup up what we've been doing to get our message out there a little bit more. So again, even though this was a higher level overview, we didn't get really granular on a lot of the line items within the budget, we'll bring that back to you, and you'll be able to see how we're spending that. And if you have particular questions or things that you want to see in there, it would be appropriate to let us know tonight, and there's probably a good chance Mr. Huat and Shawna have already discussed that, but we're happy to make sure that anything that in particular you're concerned with gets addressed in particular.
Right. I'm just, you know, we had a lot tonight. We had the, you know, the housing, and we've got Olson, we got a lot of projects, and I just want, if that's part of Shawna's thing to get out to the public, I just want to make sure she has a budget for that, to be able to make the public aware. We used to have off-site, I know before COVID, we'd have a lot of public workshops about projects coming into effect, and we used to have them in the neighborhoods that they were coming up into. And I know COVID kind of shut all that down, but I would like to see that come back, have like we did the past so talks, where people know what each department is doing and how they're spending their budgets, things like that, to be able to just be more transparent.
You bet. Thank you for the feedback. We'll make sure that gets added. And the other thing that's a part of this, again, is as part of our execution strategy is coming up with a communications plan. I think that one of the things that you're seeing that's slowly coming to fruition throughout all of this is the thread that we're trying to create alignment throughout the organization. So in the past, we've had a lot of initiatives, but there haven't been necessarily plans to back up those initiatives and the programs that we want to implement. So right now, I think council's well aware of my theme of being shovel-ready, which is addressed within here, creating capacity within the organization. We have a lot of superstars, which are here in the room tonight. We have Deidre, we have Frida, we have all the executive managers that you have, but trying to develop that next generation of leaders for the organization so we're not left hamstrung should something, one of them leave, retire, move on to another organization. We want to be prepared for that, and we also want to create capacity for the community. I think one of the things that you saw through Mr. Cornell's presentation is those eye-popping TOT numbers. Well, those eye-popping TOT numbers also bring incredible expectations for the community as well. So if we're going to be a world-class destination, I think there are world-class expectations that come along with that. So we're trying to address those within our. that come along with that. So we're trying to address those within our, within our means and within our budget. I think another big part of that, which was just touched upon, is our, our trying to create a financial capacity through looking at outside resources as well. So we're looking at grant writers, we're looking at trying to engage our politicians that, that policy regarding how we engage in lobbying and advocating for our community to receive hopefully our fair share, whatever that is. I know Mr. Strong is heavily involved with that at the national and state level as well. So we're trying to leverage all of those in addition to just leveraging the money that we have in our reserves and our future projections, bringing all of that to bear to really address the litany and the many, many things that we need to repair, fix, improve throughout the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Gregory.
So can I make a run at approving something? Is that okay? Okay. So the only, I don't want changes, but one thing I'd recommend is I like, I like the report. I'd like to move that we bring the report back to the city council with more detail, that detail being in the reorganization of the city, more detailed orientation for that, so that we can see the direct lines of communication and understand the expense. I think the same thing for the economic development. And also, I think somewhat of an airport category. I would like to note one thing, and this is just a little bit of humor, that Ryan did move all the utility billing out of his department. So I thought that was rather clever. Sorry, Chris. So if there's anything anybody else wants to add, I, I think we've given you pretty good direction, Fred.
So you've got a motion?
Yeah.
Where he wants to ask, and I would like to have my C and D.
Yes, and the items that you mentioned.
Added in, which would be the state and federal government monitoring and collaboration, monitoring, collaboration, advocacy, and cooperation and participation in our joint powers agreement commitments.
Okay. So I've got a second with that addition?
Sure.
Correct. Any further discussion from the council?
Anything else, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Gregory, five-minute break, please. Thank you.
Okay, we're back from our break. And before we move on, we need to make sure that we've covered all the bases from our previous action. We actually need a motion to accept the revised city goals as presented tonight. So if I could get that.
John, you want to do that?
Yeah, I can make a motion, Mr. Mayor, then to accept our current city goals and reaffirm for staff to move forward with those.
Very good.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We cover all the bases. We move on to item number 23, city revenue generation discussion and direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Ty Lewis, city manager. So our next item is being brought back at city council's request regarding possible various revenue generation ideas to augment our, our current budget and future budgets. As council just heard testimony that the, the list is long and distinguished of all the different needs within the community, and we have a very limited budget, even though it's increasing, we're still very short in a lot of areas for growth and expansion as well as services. And as part of that, I think the genesis came out of a recent parking discussion regarding the, the potential to fund a parking structure. Council directed us to return with ideas, including looking at our TOT, which is our transient occupancy tax, which is directly related to some of the way we fund some of our projects throughout the community. With that said, staff prepared the staff report that's before you tonight that goes into the various potential funding mechanisms, including a transient, 1% transient occupancy tax increase, which would generate approximately $700,000 to $800,000 in additional revenue if approved by the voters, which it would take a 50-plus-one vote of the, of the electorate, excuse me, of the voters to be able to approve that. The other option that city council could consider would be what they call a geo-bond, which is a general obligation bond, which is mentioned within your staff report as well, although staff at this time wouldn't recommend that. Those typically are very, it's a long process to, to get enough support for them, because they take a two-thirds majority vote to be able to pass. And so, and then, of course, what the council is very familiar with would be increasing the, the general sales tax. That's another option as well. So we did that with J-20, which was a 1%. We also have a road tax, which also generates, which is up for renewal in 2024, expires in 2025. So there are several options for the council to consider tonight. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any particular questions. We also have city attorney, who is our resident expert on getting all of these things on the ballot and can help answer questions. And we also have our financial experts from our admin services team available to answer any financial questions that you might have.
Thank you. Since the staff recommendation is that the council provide direction, we don't have staff recommendations other than, hey, what do you want us to do? It's going to be an interesting discussion, but all, as always, we'll try to go with questions first, and then public input, and then discussion. And we'll start with Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I haven't seen the staff report. It got to me way too late. It's not in my binder. So I'm not sure of the items you mentioned. I had a couple of others to, to mention, if we're talking about revenue generation. One is a renewal of the old parking district, because there is a state provision where we can create fun, you know, fundraising districts, especially when there's special purpose for that thing like a parking garage. And it could be an expanded downtown, because it would be primarily to serve the parking needs of the downtown area. And it is those particular properties that will have the benefit of the, the revenue from the leasing of their buildings to those businesses that are going to profit from people using the parking spaces. So there's a lot of nexus there. So I'm wondering if we have looked at that at all. The other thing, and we've discussed that already before, and it's coming back to us again, and that is to change our cannabis ordinance to allow retail stores, which in other cities is generating a million dollars or more a year in taxation. So, which is another possible source of revenue that could be used for that purpose, mind other things. So I'm wondering if, if any consideration has been given to these in this staff report.
You bet. Mr. Strong, thank you for the question. So I think that your comments regarding a business improvement district or a parking district are certainly options. I think that, as evidenced with what's going on in our community today, that a lot of times those are initiated and generated by the business community themselves. And as tonight, Travel Paso had an item on there for renewal of their T-Bid, which is, which is moving forward. So if there was a particular item, such as a parking structure, that council, you know, was, was interested in forwarding, I think that the one thing that is often overlooked is that the community has ways of raising funds as well. So it depends on what council really wants to use the money for, what type of projects that they want to accomplish, would probably determine, you know, the best source of revenue to pursue. So your, your point is well taken. Regarding cannabis, we are moving forward with that option as well. We've met with several consultants to help us craft the framework to, to bring that to the community, or at least that propose that to the city council for consideration. And I think what you're talking about is retail storefronts as opposed to delivery, which is already approved within the city. And I would probably augment that with beyond just retail storefront, a lot of the communities, you know, I think it's important to consider head of household jobs when we talk about the cannabis market, whether it's laboratory testing, manufacturing, or other aspects beyond retail storefront that would also create head of household jobs, as well as increase the tax revenue for the community.
Other questions? Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to talk about the TOT. I think, to me, that's going to be the, the least impact of our Roblins, to be able to generate additional revenue with, I'm seeing other cities here, you know, equal to us, 10%, basically, which is where we are. Morro Bay, still 10%. But you see Pismo, Grover Beach, Grover's 12%, Pismo is 11%. I would really like to see us entertain at least a 1% request from the public, because this is something they have to vote on, right? And.
So, John, questions right now?
Yeah, I am. I'm, I'm getting there. With regard to generation of making that change, what, what do we have to do to ask for that 1%?
Sorry about that. So it takes, it's a multi-step process. You'd start with a public hearing, the, do an ordinance amendment, then it would go to the voters.
I see. Once it's, agree that we want to do that, then it goes on the ballot for the public?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think to get on the November ballot, did you guys look at that, the timing to get on the ballot?
I believe we need to be able to respond to the county, yeah, to, by June, in order for them to process it by August, if that, if I recall correctly.
Yeah. That's why I was asking, essentially, because I know, I think really bottom line, time is going to be of the essence here, if we're going to be doing something like that. But the other avenues of, you know, city revenue, I'm thinking, is we can get staff to look at maybe a downtown parking assessment. I'm focusing back on how we can try to achieve a goal to build and sustain a parking structure, and how we get there without impacting, you know, the public. So by using a tool of a downtown parking assessment, anybody in the area gets, in a certain area that we designate, will have an assessment put on their business. Is that how that typically works?
Well, in the case of the hoteliers, I think that's one example. We're going through that process right now. That's something that's initiated by the business community themselves, and so they're assessing themselves in order to be able to direct that money towards identified projects. And in this case, it's mostly marketing that they, they direct their, their focus towards. And so they go through a polling and a voting of those particular businesses that are affected and will be assessed within the identified zone. And then, once they receive a majority of support from those major contributors, then it comes back, as we're doing in May and in June, for hearings with, with the city council. So it would take support of the city council as well to advance a, whatever type of improvement district was initiated before it was finally adopted. And throughout that process, there's, of course, business plans that are written that are vetted that they have to meet with. I believe it's the transportation code that, that, that regulates business improvement districts. So typically, yes, it would, it would come from the, the community and those business owners that say we want to assess ourselves for this purpose. And then you go through that process, similar to what we're doing with Travel Paso.
So I guess why my, my question there is, is that this is a council action and an agreement with the merchants in this area to do this. It's not a public vote for the, to have this.
That's correct. A property-based business improvement district does not require a vote of the public. You need a certain number of people who will be impacted to have signed a petition to, to act in favor of it. And then the council asks to act in favor of it.
Got it. Okay. Other questions? Mr. Gregory?
I just have a question. Ty, have you talked to San Luis or Morro Bay city managers about them, they're raising their TOT?
Whether they are or not, whether they're considering it. I haven't heard of any other, the, the most recent increase The most recent increase was Pismo Beach, when all the, most of the municipalities raised their sales tax, they elected to forego that and instead increase their TOT.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Nope. Very good. We'll open up the public for comment. This is your opportunity. Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak, please come to the lecture. Welcome.
Do I live 11th and 3524th Street? Here in Pasco. Just the general discussion of TOT, I can maybe get behind, but I guess the discussion in general of any increase of funds, I mean, you gave a lot of reasons why today, but I mean, I feel like always, not always, many times, we ask for money and then we decide how to spend the money. So, I'd like to hear how we're going to spend the money before we get behind promoting whatever avenues it might be to create more funding. Like I said, there was a long list, just the discussion item before, but are we going to focus on some of those items or not? That would be the question.
Very good. Thank you. I see no one else coming forward. Do we have anybody online? No one online. We're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Just a couple of comments I'll kick off with. First of all, I keying off what Matt just said, I know we've had general discussions about the needs that we have, and the most recent need we talked about was the parking structure. The thing is that, I mean, that's still just a concept. I mean, we don't have property, we don't have plans, so to sort of go out asking for money before we know what we're asking for, it might be premature. The other thing is, I have a question on these issues that have to go before the public. This is like a two-year cycle, right? If we don't make it this election year, we have to wait two years before we ask again.
Unless you wanted to...
Unless you want to do a special election, which is not likely.
$150,000 or so.
Yeah, that's, doesn't make any sense. So, I'm looking at the options that, and I'm sure there are others, that we have here, some more developed than others. We have transient occupancy tax, which I think we all understand, a geo bond, which I think we all understand, sales tax, which our citizens have already committed a great deal of money through sales tax. So, I think that box has been checked. The parking assessment district that was raised recently with regards to a parking structure, and then the cannabis issue that Councilman Strong raised. What I would love to see is, I would love to see a use matrix. I'd love to see, these are the funding sources, and then sort of like a Gantt chart that shows if you were going to choose these funding sources, this is how long it would take to bring it online, taking into account the amount of time it would take to inform the public, poll public hearings, get it on a ballot. I think we're almost too late for that this year. But then also, at the same time, have very specific targets for this money because I think we all agree that if we go out, whether it's an assessment district, or whether it's TOT or a geo bond, people want to know exactly what we're going to use this money on. So, I think, while I think all of these funding sources are legit, and I think that a case can be made for each one of them, I think that we have to make that case, and we have to show that these are the things that we need to, we want to spend the funds on, this is how we're going to inform the public, this is how long the process is going to take, and then if we've got that use matrix that shows the funding sources and the projects we want to spend it on, then everybody's kind of on the same page with that. So, that's just, those are my thoughts. So, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I think the reason why I asked for this to be brought back is that there's a lot of, there's a lot of financial needs for the city, but most importantly is that the travelers are going to pay for this tax, and we need to reward our citizens who live here that are dealing with the issues from tourism, parks, recreation, the roads, our police department. There's so many things, and we need to be more, we need to be specific about where the money is spent. But we're going to run out of our half-cent sales tax in 2024. We don't have any way to pay for spaceport. We need to upgrade our high-speed internet, or we need to get fiber to the airport. Just the fiber to the airport, the recreation department, police department, police department's pretty well covered now, but roads and other infrastructure homelessness that are in the city now that need funding. And I think that from a voter perspective, it's coming from the tourist. I don't want to hurt the industry, the transportation industry or the tourist industry, but it is a very clean income, and it's not just for one year, it's for a long, long time. And if you take the funding, parking structure is a great example, it's $850,000 a year of TOT, and that can go into a lot of pockets. And I'm happy to help identify those, but the money needs to be spent. We're never going to raise money privately for a parking structure. The TOT, to me, is one of the cleanest ways to do it because it pays our citizens back and gives them a parking option. We don't have any other options. We do spaceport and everything else. We're continually looking for funding, and we have a big funding mechanism ending in two years. So, if we want these other things, like a parking structure, I think this is a good, clean, safe bet. It's like an electric car versus a gas car. We don't have to bleed our general fund, but the people that pay for it are tourists. And so, I feel strongly it's a good thing. I don't want to make a negative impact on the town. It's positive because the money would come back to the citizens. That's my top comment.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally agree with Councilman Gregory. I think, again, I'm sorry that our council did not move forward with at least keeping our parking program in the black. That was something I think that we should have done as a council, to at least get it level. However, moving forward, you know, if we have a goal of improving the city and downtown in particular, and we have funding methods to be able to do, for instance, a parking structure or other surface lots or any kind of parking that will help our downtown with regard to having space available when we want to go down and find it, I think that's a goal that I think, you know, will move our downtown in general way forward in the future. I mean, it's not going to get any cheaper to build this kind of a structure, any kind of a lot that we're talking about here. We've got to, I think, concentrate on if we're going to do it, we're going to make it, make it happen. The other thing, too, I actually got ahold of Julie Dixon, and she has a tool that I'm just getting into right now, and it's an amazing tool, what-if tool. In other words, if we do a certain amount of cost per parking space, whatever, it will generate X amount. And we also need to find out what that whole parking structure would be to build. Those two points right there will intersect, and we can actually plan ahead for parking and have it paid for in 30 years, you know? And then after that, then we have a revenue-generating machine. So, again, I think it's a goal that the council needs to bite and say if we're going to do this, we're doing it. If not, we're not going to move on. But I think as a goal-setting, this season, this coming up, time is of the essence if we're going to do something with regard to a TOT revenue generation kind of a thing here. So, to me, I think that's a focus that we need to stay on in the next month or two.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Well, I agree with the TOT and being straightforward. This is where, you know, they come, the transit, the, you know, they come to, the tourists, they come to the downtown, they come to visit. And like Mr. Lewis, our city manager, said earlier, if we want to continue for them to come down, we need to keep it looking nice. We need to make sure, we just talked about how much it's going to cost to have the parking lots at Marv's, you know? We talked about having more lighting, we talked about it being safe. I mean, it's not just safe for the employees, of course, but it's also going to be safe for, for the tourists that are down there. We've talked about having more security, and all that funding could go to that, to the downtown. So, I agree with Mr. Gregory and Mr. Hammond on that.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
I have no problem with that.
So, what I'm hearing is council consensus for moving forward with the strategy of a TOT, but earmarking it for a parking structure. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, or any kind of downtown improvement where, who's paying for this is going to be our visitors, basically, and they concentrate in our downtown and impact our downtown, wherein our roblins can't use it as much as they would if they weren't here.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we're going to go to the people and ask them to vote on this, I want to be very specific about the money.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gregory?
I have a recommendation. I move, I'd like to recommend that we have our city manager come with a list of items, and then we can help direct that, the list of items. Parking structure is probably the primary one, but downtown lighting, fixing the parking lots, fixing roads, whatever, we have a list from Ty and give it to us, and we advocate it.
So, is that your motion?
No, I can make a motion. John, I was just thinking. Well, I'll wait for the city attorney.
So, before you make a motion, I think it's fine to have a plan as to what we want to use the funds for. If we get real specific and earmark it for specific things, we will need to look at whether that changes the voter requirement from a special tax to a general tax to a special tax. So, I think there's a difference between identifying a list of needs and identifying exactly what we're going to spend this money on.
So, we were very successful with that on the J-20, by the way. So, we did, that's what we have the oversight committee for, and we could fold it right into the oversight committee if we need to. But like right now, for the J-20 funds, it's police, fire, and roads, and we're right on target with that. And we could do the same thing and keep it general in nature. But so, the 66% is a tough...
If it's in general or fairly general, like, again, we just talked about, then it's 50% plus one, correct? Not two-thirds vote for a specific item.
Right.
Right. So, for example, if we were to say we want to impose a tax to build a parking structure, that would be very specific and would result in a 66% requirement. If we want to say that we need to generate funds to address impacts to the community based on tourism, particularly those that are concentrated in the downtown area, I suspect that that would fall within the 50-plus-one. But if that's the direction you decide to go, when staff comes back, we will analyze that for you in more detail, so you've got some more direction.
So, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we move to approve going on the one-cent TOT increase based on improvements for downtown and tourist-related costs to improve our community from the tourism.
Second, further discussion? Motion, my Councilman Gregory. Second, my Councilman Hammond. Discussion, Councilman Hammond.
So, basically, what you're saying is that you want to have a design that would be a general tax, not specific for a variety of items in the downtown.
Parking, lighting, safety, whatever, getting trolleys, whatever. It's going to help service the downtown and deal with the tourism.
Any further discussion? Roll call votes, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask a clarifying question, too? As part of the staff report, we also mentioned that using a consultant to be able to help us devise and craft any particular language for a ballot initiative, excuse me for adding this to the, to the ballot, is there, is there preference from council regarding that particular aspect to this as well?
I'm fine adding, amending my motion or starting a new one, saying, I move that we use a professional poller advisor to help us get it on the ballot.
Any objection to that?
No.
Second motion, the second of agree. Any, any just further discussion? Okay, then we'll consider the motion. Let's do that.
Thank you.
Item number 24, city manager report.
Muted myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, several items that have been going on since our last couple of city council meetings. Today, I attended the board of supervisors meeting. There was a robust discussion by our county CIO and the board of supervisors regarding establishing a homeless services division within the county to begin taking the lead on several initiatives in aligning the cities and municipalities with the county on providing homeless services, which I thought was encouraging, and hopefully we'll have more information. Unfortunately, I didn't get to hear the outcome of that because I had to be back for our Travel Paso board meeting this afternoon as well. I provided Travel Paso board with an update on this particular topic that we just had regarding the potential to create, increase TOT. Of note that I think that one of the things that, improving our downtown, that they were interested in, is the potential for a convention center and to enhance economic development. So, that was some of the feedback that I received from them. I also met with Congressman Carver Hall's office, brought them to meet with our executive team to be able to talk about how his office could support us in our funding needs and endeavors as we look at spaceport, as we look at homeless issues, as we look at economic development, when it comes to support from, from that office, which was great. Also, we talked about homelessness a little bit tonight. The chamber is still moving forward with the last phases of their future study as it relates to homelessness, which will be a springboard, hopefully, for a strategic plan, again, tying that back, hopefully, to what the county's trying to do and the other municipality, I can speak, municipalities, and being able to align our efforts to achieve maximum success in that arena as well. Happy to report that Chief Snordetta facilitated EOC training this last week as well, so keeping our city staff sharp when it comes to emergency operations and our SIMs and NIMs, aspects of emergency preparedness. And I also gave two presentations in the last couple of weeks to various realtors discussing short-term rentals, the development that's going on in the community, and other community happenings. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Council Business Committee reports. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I was invited to go and speak from the Slow Chamber at a leadership conference that they have once a year. It was held at the El Choral Regional Park in San Luis. So, I attended that April the 8th. It was a great turnout. I, Ms. Erica Stewart was there as well, and we spoke a little bit about diversity in our Paso community. And then I attended, on April 9th, I attended the parking workshop here in the chamber. I also attended the housing meeting on Tuesday, April 12th. And I was going to attend the library meeting, but I didn't make it. My dog got really sick, and I had to take her for some surgery, so I didn't make the library meeting. I know I had texted Mr. Strong, said, "I'm on my way, I'm going to make the library meeting." I didn't make it, and that's all I have for now, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Well, thank you. I didn't attend it either because I thought Murray was attending. I apologize. And I was all dressed and ready to go out the door, too. Anyway, I did attend, however, the Main Street meeting where our assistant city manager, Chris Hewat, was the guest speaker, and we both got our earful about parking downtown. And that was, the bulk of what was talked about was the downtown parking, so we got an earful on that. I also attended the Slocog meeting and found out that they are moving ahead with our things. We do have a couple of our projects that are on a conditional list, depending upon our meeting, the local requirements necessary in the time limits that are provided, and that funding is, is being held. Then I attended the National League of Cities Transportation and Infrastructure Policy Committee meeting. That was a virtual attendance, and we, it was very, very robust, and we talked about adding spaceport as one of our subcommittees and one of our areas that we're going to be working with more. And our federal advocate, Brittany Kohler, is carrying some of our needs on, on transportation to Washington DC or to the appropriate committees. I attended the Losan meeting yesterday, and that was a board meeting that presented tremendous problems because we have a very high turnover and very, a lot of members who are relatively new. And the biggest problem was that they didn't understand SB 1225, which is our enabling legislation by the state that allowed us to become the agency that ran the Pacific Surfline Railroad. And in that legislation, it allowed us to do so if we got an appropriate agency that was one of our member agencies that had the expertise to do that, to actually run the intercity to city rail. We had only three in our entire membership. We are a joint... We are a joint powers agreement. And those three were LA, LA Metro, Sandag, which is San Diego, and OCTA, which is the Orange County. We gait the contract under my administration, when I was the president of the board, to OCTA. That contract was up for renewal, and we did renew it toward the end of last year, good until June 2024. However, all our employees are their employees, everybody who runs our agency. They're evidently, they had a problem in their HR with our managing director, and she was fired. And because it's a personnel issue, we have no idea why she was fired. And we cannot know why she was fired because that's a personnel matter that is in their executive session. So we have no right to know that. However, some of our newer members became so upset, they wanted to immediately just cancel the contract, hire our own legal counsel, and hire our own executive director. That would remove us as a state agency, which we now are under this, and would have also put all of the cost of running and continuing to run that railroad back on the members of the JPA. That would have put on the city of Paso Roads a cost that could be in the millions of dollars because we are a member of the JPA that's a member of that JPA. So fortunately, I had six people there who listened and who had some knowledge of what our actual responsibilities were, and we defeated that motion. But it's still bubbling, so we have to keep our eyes on that and protect ourselves diligently in that regard. And also, they are moving ahead on extending our railroad up to the Bay Area. So it's very important for us in a number of ways. I attended the, I am going to be attending the CalCog Board meeting next week in Sacramento, which I chair. And one of the things we're going to be heavily discussing is having our lobbyist up there, our CEO, who is very intimately involved with Caltrans, working on getting a, an amendment to the VMT rules for rural and semi-rural areas so that we can have the VMT rules changed according to the density population of the area affected. So that you do not have to show that you're going to reduce VMT with a traffic improvement that may be for public safety purposes and for actually, for purposes that's going to reduce the VMT that would be otherwise spewed into the air by all the traffic being backed up and congested. So this is a hard thing to get across, but that's one of the things we're going to be discussing. Other than that, I'm going on to a NARC national meeting in Columbus, Ohio. That's coming up another month, and then an NLC meeting possibly after that. This afternoon, well, this is very preliminary and very nebulous, so this is not anything that's necessarily happening. But I was asked this afternoon by some national and state people if I would consider a nomination to represent the state of California on the Amtrak Board of Directors. And I said if such a nomination was forthcoming, I would seriously consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meetings, I attended the city senior citizens committee, actually was canceled, lack of forum, few people were there, but couldn't have enough to do business. National Water Commission, we met, and nothing significant really to report there. IWMA, went to that also. And ongoing saga on the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement that we voted on as a board, elected to go ahead and continue with our eight members. That was the question, whether we want to go to nine members or stay with eight. And the board elected to go with seven cities and one CSDO. So we have total eight members at this point. Question I have for staff is on the Downtown Parking Committee, the value of that, keeping that going. I want to ask city manager about that, and if it's something that we need to continue or bring it back to our level, what's your thought here? I just want to bounce that off Ty.
Thank you for the question. I think that that is something that would probably be worthy of council's full consideration on the validity of that group moving forward. I think that certainly there's been some turnover and some challenges recruiting. But if the council, I think the biggest challenge is that they brought a lot of suggestions to this, to the council, and ultimately, council kind of digests that and moves forward in an often different direction. So whether or not the council, you know, wants to rely on that group moving forward, I think that, you know, for limited duration events, you could appoint an ad hoc if there are particular aspects of downtown parking that you want to address, and you could use the existing membership to advise you on that. And similar to what you're doing with homeless issues, I think there's a lot of directions that you could go. But I think most importantly, keeping some sort of public voice is important, but whether or not it's in the form of a commission, I can tell you it takes a lot of staff time and preparation because there's Brown Act compliance that we have to work with, there's public noticing. And one of the biggest, I think, detractors is that Donna King, our, our parking supervisor, is dedicated to those administrative duties as opposed to being out in the field actually doing parking enforcement or supervising those folks that are out there. So there are some practical operational issues by eliminating that, but that certainly, certainly formed at the pleasure of the council, and we could address that at any point.
Would you like to agenda?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if the council sees that maybe we might want to have an agenda to discuss that.
You're good with that? Okay, let's agendize options for moving forward with parking commission. Anything else, Sean?
Yeah, the other thing I was going to mention, I was just on YouTube, and I saw that we did a drone file looking down on Airport Road and 46 East. Did anybody else see that? That was pretty interesting. Over time, it showed the traffic flow really, really quick over time.
Mr. Hammond, that's exactly one of the things that Mr. Hewat and Shawna have been working on, when we talk about trying to increase our communication effort throughout the community and expanding some of the opportunities that we have to share information. I can tell you that in front of you is a, the Golden Spike Project. Mr. Frase and his staff and others throughout the community, or throughout the organization, have been talking about how to, you know, finish off Highway 46. Some of that drone footage will, you know, there's a link, a QR code in front of you, you can access it, see some pictures, see some drone footage of some of the challenges that are presented, and get a firsthand glimpse from an aerial view of why it's so important that we complete this over crossing at some point in the future. So that's probably one of the newer initiatives that you'll see more of is using drone footage as well as photography. Picture's worth a thousand words, and who knows what a video's worth, so.
Very good. So I have.
All good. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, so I had, I attended the ad hoc with Councilman Hammond last week, or week before, for the homelessness. And then we're having another one tomorrow, a meeting with John Bishan and Mayor Martin Thursday for breakfast, and then LaFgo on Thursday. I just, I, I did attend the parking meeting this little, I didn't, it didn't come out of the way I hoped it would, but I think it's really important. One of the things I'm feeling is like in this ad hoc that we're working on, on the homeless issues, it's very educational. It's also factual. And one of the things that I felt in that meeting, it wasn't factual. And I think it's really important because we have to understand what the reality is on the parking. So I'm happy to see it come back. That's it for me.
Thank you. I attended a meeting with our theater operator, John Roush, and also John Arnold from Travel Paso to discuss the idea of expanding the use of the downtown cinema to encompass activities more than just showing movies, to use it as a virtual conference center. And Mr. Roush is very interested in the idea, and I'm working with others right now to bring mini-conferences into the city of Paso Robles, using that as their conference center, and then, of course, using restaurants and hotels for breakout facilities. If it's successful, then we'll open a new book of business for tourism in Paso Robles, which would encompass business tourism, not just recreational tourism, and would also be a very healthy addition to, to the theater business also. I attended the Bearcat Serenade, Paso Robles High School Jazz Band out at Pear Valley, and that was very enjoyable.
Bring your instrument with you?
I did not bring my instrument. I'm, I'm not quite ready to go public with that yet, but I may show up some night with a saxophone, you never know. Met with Jordan Cunningham, we talked about infrastructure needs for Paso Robles. I sat in on the unhoused future study that the Chamber of Commerce is running, and they have concluded that now, or do they have one more to go? They have one more to go, and then we'll get a report from them. We had our mayor's luncheon this last week here, and Shawna and Melissa did a great job of setting that up for us down at Kramer's Guitars. The other mayors were very impressed with the meeting, and once again, we've raised the bar on that, and I can't wait to see what happens at the next mayor's meeting. We talked about two major subjects. One was homeless. Susan Funk from the Tascadore Chamber, Tascadore City Council was there, and she's been heavily involved in H-Soc and talked about the homeless issues in the county, and we had a pretty good discussion about that. I brought up some of my ideas to her, and I put her in contact with Gina Fitzpatrick in the chamber in the unhoused study they're doing to make sure that we at least try to stay on the same page here. And then also, we had a report from Melissa James of Reach regarding the closure of Diablo Canyon and some of the issues that are going to be surrounding that, and the Reach organization is involved with that. I met with our CalCities representative, Dave Mullenex. We talked about mini-conferences. I'm hoping that CalCities will bring a mini-conference to Paso Robles, also infrastructure and other resources for spaceport and broadband. And then today, I briefly attended the Travel Paso Board of Directors. I got called away to an important phone call, so I missed a big portion of it, but I was there for a portion of that meeting. And that's the story of my dog. Upcoming events, Wildfire Preparedness Workshop, Saturday, April 23rd, 9:00 AM. Development Review Committee meeting will be Monday, April 25th, at 3:30 PM. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, April 26th, at 6:30 PM. Dia de los Niños, Day of the Child, also a day of the book. Friday, April 29th, 2:30 PM. Development Review Committee meeting again on Monday, May the 2nd, at 3:30 PM. Deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on Tuesday, May the 17th, Wednesday, May the 4th, and I believe that Councilman Hammond has a motion to adjourn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at my laptop here, my dad, you know, it's in keeping with World War II Commemoration Week, I'd like to make a motion that we close this meeting in honor of the greatest generation. I think those who fought the World War II and the young men and women at that time and their lives, the answer to call chaos, and majority of the council are products of that generation. And again, I love to say again, this is a great phrase, that, you know, all that gave some, and some gave all, you know, in World War II, to make us where we are today. And I'm profoundly grateful of my dad pulling his parachute seconds before he hit the ground Christmas Eve 44.
There you go. Second. We got a motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your hard work.